Good photos of staff and city council members. I've got more adults than we have on this floor. So community staff, they trust and feel comfortable to talk to us.
Great. Can everybody hear me? We're going to go ahead and get started. Everybody will take their seats, please. And we're going to go ahead and let Bob Gaylor, since he's our parliamentarian, lay out how we're going to do these interviews this evening. So Bob, go ahead.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, we have four candidates to be interviewed. We've set aside one hour for the interviews. So that's 15 minutes each. So we are on a time constraint here. So we want to watch our time. But we also want to be fair to each of the applicants or candidates. And what that means is, is that we've got a list of questions. There are five questions that you've been given. And to go beyond those questions and ask some candidates one question and not another candidate would cause some improper, inequitable interview process. So what we'd like to do is to stick with the five questions and ask the same questions to each candidate. And that would mean that you shouldn't interject your own personal questions during the process because that'll just do two things. One is it'll change the time constraint, but more importantly, it'll cause an inequitable result with the interview process with each of the four candidates because you'd have to ask the same question to all four candidates. So hopefully, we can stick to the five questions. Now, the plan would be is to rotate council members in asking the questions. So you've got five questions. You've got eight council members. But the mayor has indicated that he won't be asking questions. So that means we've got seven council members. And so you'll ask five to that candidate. And then when that candidate leaves, then the next council member who didn't ask a question on the prior one would just pick up from there. So we keep rotating that way. That way, each council member gets a fair chance to ask the same number of questions as other council members. Is that clear? Okay. And start with Renee and then work around the room that way. Now, I think another point that should be made is after the questions have been asked, a final question could be, or should be, I would think, is ask the candidate if they have any other comments that they'd like to make. Kind of leave it open-ended that way and just let them expound a little bit on what they think about the process and why they're even applying. So that's, I guess you might say, the last question that's in addition to the five that you've got spelled out on your list. I might ask at this time, does everybody have a copy of the five questions I'm talking about?
You know what we don't have, Bob, is like a rating sheet to rate the candidates. Where do you want us to... Do you just want us to keep our time count?
Your own. Because then, and that's a good segue into the next step, is then on February 4th, we'll have a secret written ballot where you vote. And you vote your own frame of mind for the person that you want.
Just everybody gets one vote.
Laura, is that how we're doing it, is one vote? And then on the first...
We'll be given a ballot on the 4th. And so based on your thoughts tonight, on your own personal thoughts of tonight, then you will pass the ballot. The ballot box is selected.
And then if it ends up a tie vote, then we'll have a second ballot. And we'll drop the lowest ones so that the two highest ones will be on the final ballot then.
Why did we change from the method of scoring every question, one through five? It seemed like that was a more objective way of doing it. Why did we change for that?
Well...
I can answer that, Mr. Benson, but I don't have your council policies in front of me. I don't know if that reflects your council policy.
It's not a written council policy. It's just a matter of judgment, the way the council wants to handle it.
I don't remember making any...
No, there's no written policy on that. But what it amounts to is you, as a council, just vote your own frame of mind on February 4th.
And the charge of no say should have to be determined by secret ballot.
Those ratings make the whole thing a lot more objective, is all I'm saying. I don't know what was wrong with that method. You know what, Jim? Maybe I can help address that. I didn't make any changes to how it was done the last time. And I do know that rating sheet is used in boards and commissions type of appointments. But you guys had changed the structure when Tony Johnson's seat came available. And we're sticking with exactly the same structure. So I don't know if you had a rating sheet when you filled that vacancy?
No, you didn't. When you filled the vacancy for Tony Johnson.
Right. So it's set up exactly the same as what it was when you filled that vacancy for Tony Johnson. I remember that. I would just like to see it go back to the way it was because I think it just makes the whole thing a lot more objective and not so subjective. But that's just my opinion. Well, I think if each council member wants to keep track and rate each question for each applicant, then you're more than welcome to do that to determine which applicant you like the best. And I think it's important that we limit contact with the applicants for the next week while we're making that decision.
That's a good point. It's requested, then, that during the week, a council does not start doing your own interview with the candidates because that, again, leads to a lack of fairness for all the other candidates. So tonight, we'll ask the questions. And then on the 4th, you'll vote. But no interviews during the course of the week. Any other comments or questions that anybody has? Brian?
Just one additional comment. Mr. Gaylor, Mr. Hayes, and I will all keep track of the time and start waving when you're less than a minute to go in each interview in an effort to try and keep them on that 15-minute schedule and allow an equal amount of time for each candidate.
Well, let's start that time when the first question's asked so that it's the same for everybody. And then we'll give them an opportunity after the last question's asked to use the rest of their time to address the council on anything they want to add, okay?
Where do you want the candidates to be?
Right here.
Over here.
That'll be fine.
Does that give a warning or is that just at the end?
Okay. You need a warning?
Okay. That'd be good.
And then who's going to be the first candidate that we interview?
The interviews were scheduled in the order in which the applications were received. I don't recall who the first candidate is, but Ms. Bauer, when you're ready, we'll bring the first candidate in.
Mr. Grego is the first on the list that we have.
That will be the first applicant.
Also, on your package, it shows you have Mr. Gonzalez's last. It's not correct. You got to put Gonzalez at the level. Mr. Gonzalez came in there last. He had to do his... We had to combine all of his information in the one we have. But actually, the order in which they came in, the order which your ballots will be, you're listed on the list, you're listed on the list next week, and the order that they came in. So Mr. Grego was first, Mr. Amador was second, Mr. Gonzalez was third, and Mr. Gonzalez was fourth. I don't know that Mr. Grego is here. He left a minute ago. So if he's not here, I will bring in Mr. Amador.
Okay. Thank you.
So that's the hot seat. Good evening. Glad you're here with us this evening. What we're going to do is the council's going to start off by asking you a series of questions. There'll be five in total. We're going to allow each applicant 15 minutes to respond. And then whatever time is left within that 15 minutes, you can address the council and utilize the rest of that time. The city clerk will let you know when you're down to one minute left. And then a timer will go off. A buzzer will go off at 15 minutes, okay?
Very good. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, it might be appropriate to have the candidate begin with his name and his address, perhaps?
Sure. Go ahead and let us know who you are.
My name is Andrew Amador. My address is 7234 East 73rd Avenue in Commerce City, Colorado.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Bullock, you want to start everything off?
Good evening, Ms. Amador. What is the main reason you are seeking this position?
The main reason that I'm seeking the city council vacancy is, first and foremost, is because I care and I want to give back to my community. I can elaborate a little bit on that. I grew up in Commerce City my entire life, went off and got educated at CU Boulder, got a bachelor's of environmental design, went on to get a master's in architecture, kind of moved around the suburbs a little bit and back to Commerce City. In 2008, I thought of running for city council in general. In 2008, the dilemma for me was to open a business in architectural services or city council. So I moved in the direction of developing an architectural service business. That has grown today. Here we are in 2013. And I'm excited for the opportunity to be able to apply for Ward 1 city council vacancy.
Thank you.
Good evening, Andrew. This is Steve Douglas. Thanks for coming here tonight. Next question is, could you please explain what you see is the most pressing matter for city council in the near term? And what do you think you can contribute during the remainder of your term you are seeking to fill in order to help solve or overcome these issues? If you need me to ask you again, I can do that.
The most pressing matter, I think, within Commerce City is managing the development. So Commerce City has doubled its population in the last 10 years. Within the northern range, there's lots of opportunities for development. And also, within the core city, there are a lot of opportunities for urban infill. So probably, the biggest item that I see for city council is managing good development, writing good policies, working with the community, and getting that feedback so that their voice is heard.
Good evening, and thank you for being here. Hope you can hear me very well. Okay. Question number three. The city's image was one of the most concerning issues in recent surveys taken by our citizens. What, if anything, would you do to continue to improve Commerce City's image?
Commerce City's image, in my opinion, is a positive image. So in growing up in Commerce City, in the core Commerce City, I remember there was a time when there were properties that were very rundown. So in previous past, there have been ordinances passed to help improve the image of Commerce City, which is wonderful. So I went off to college, and I remember some of the neighborhoods that were here maybe weren't in the best condition. I came back, and I was amazed with the enforcement and the ordinances that had happened to make the community look much better. You know, we are bound by multiple highways, I-70, 270, I-76. So there are a few things that might be ISOs, but nothing that cannot be fully redeveloped. And so with, we'll just take, for instance, I-76. We do have a transit line coming through, through RTD at 72nd and Colorado Boulevard. With that development, there's huge opportunities to clean up some of the unsightly messes that are there, and I think they will happen. So again, development that's coming along is huge for the city council.
All right. Thank you very much.
Ms. Ramador, thank you for coming tonight and putting your hat in the ring. I would like to hear what you think should be accomplished in the short and the long term in both the north and the south parts of the city.
Can you repeat the question one more time?
Sure. Accomplishments? What do you think should be our focus in the north and the south in the short and the long term?
Okay. So for the short term, let's concentrate on short term. In the south, I do see that the city did purchase the Mile High Greyhound Park that's coming down right now. Redeveloping that in a comprehensive manner to see what the economy will sustain, but also good development for the community. So that's in the core city. On the northern range side, again, managing good development, whether there are planned unit developments to help the residents with maybe the grocery store like that's out there now. Great success. It's a role model for other king supers. So that's kind of the short term, is bring more amenities to the north. The long-term goals in the master planning side of it for the south, for sure, is to preserve our historical community that's here. There are some really unique neighborhoods that I'd like to see long-term preserved. On the northern range, long-term, manage good development with transportation access, getting in and out of the north along Highway 2. I did see that there is a new bus line running to the north. Good job, council, for help making that happen along with RTD.
Thank you.
Well, am I on? Mr. Amador, thank you for coming. And I actually have a long, difficult question, so we may have to break it up. Please provide us with a brief description of the city's budget and council's role in the budgetary process as you understand it. Also, please include total budget in dollar amounts, example of key sources of revenues and expenditures. So would you like for me to go break that up and do it a little piece at a time?
Yes, let's break that up one piece at a time.
So provide us with a brief description of the city budget and council's role in the budgetary process as you understand it.
So the 2013 city budget that is approved through city council is $50.8 million for 2013. There are numerous opportunities for the capital improvement projects, which is in the amount of $2 million for this year. Let's see. Can you repeat the question one more time? Those are the dollar amounts.
The city budget and council's role in the budgetary process as you understand it.
Council's role is to help the city manager and our accounting within the city to maintain a balanced budget through taxes. That's how we get some of our revenues and how we spend them. We just need to manage that correctly. So understanding the way that the budget works and how to maintain that for 2013, 2014 at about a 3% inflation rate, I think, will be all right.
The next part was, let's see. Please include total budget in dollar amounts. You did. And example of key sources of revenues and expenditures. So you can highlight any more that you want, but I think you did cover most of it.
No, just, I would just add maintaining well the taxes at a reasonable rate for the citizens of Commerce City and how we spend them with, just to maintain our overall city budget on an annual basis. I have read the annual report from last year. It was a little lengthy, but I got the gist of it.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Amador, that's all five questions. And you're more than welcome to use the rest of your time to talk to the council. Anything you'd like to add for your interview process?
First of all, I want to thank council and the opportunity for the interview. I would say that my educational background, both being in architecture and my experience on a professional level, being on the other end of the table, sometimes providing information to a city, to a council for guidelines from a services standpoint, definitely will help me make well-informed decisions for Commerce City and for our community. So thank you.
Thank you very much for coming in this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
So you can highlight any more that you want, but I think you did cover most of it.
No, just, I would just add maintaining well the taxes at a reasonable rate for the citizens of Commerce City and how we spend them with, just to maintain our overall city budget on an annual basis. I have read the annual report from last year. It was a little lengthy, but I got the gist of it.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Amador, that's all five questions, and you're more than welcome to use the rest of your time to talk to the council. Anything you'd like to add for your interview process?
First of all, I want to thank council and the opportunity for the interview. I would say that my educational background, both being in architecture and my experience on a professional level, being on the other end of the table, sometimes providing information to a city, to a council for guidelines from a services standpoint, definitely will help me make well-informed decisions for Commerce City and for our community. So thank you.
Thank you very much for coming in this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now I'm scared to go home tonight.
Good evening, Mr. Gonzalez. Go ahead and have a seat. What we'll do is the council members will be asking you five questions. You'll be given a 15-minute timeframe to conduct the interview. Once those five questions are answered and you're comfortable with the answers to those questions, you'll be given an opportunity to use the rest of your time to talk to the council about anything you want to expand on. Okay, would you please give us your name and address to get started? Should be, yes.
Manuel Gonzalez, 7051 Clermont Street.
Okay, thank you, and we'll start over here with Mr. Teeter. We'll start with the first question.
Good evening, Mr. Gonzalez. First question is, what is the main reason you are seeking this position?
Well, you know, growing up in Commerce City, I think, from my perspective, it was a struggle, and I really didn't have the direction that I needed. So finally, when I was able to get my head above water, from my personal experiences and my professional experiences, I understood that, well, life revolves around politics in a sense, and I know a lot of people don't want to acknowledge that. So I would say, now at this point, I do acknowledge that, and I want to be an advocate for my community. I want to be able to voice my opinion and share my thoughts and ideas with the community and the council.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, I'm Jim Benson, Council, Ward two. Next question is, please explain, I need to get the right glasses on here. Please explain what you see as the most pressing matter for the City Council in the near term and what you think you can contribute during the remainder of the term you are seeking to fill in order to help solve or overcome this issue.
Sure. I think there's been a lot of focus on growth and development over the last 10 years, obviously, and there's been an explosion of growth. And so from my perspective, I think that, well, growth and development often seems like a way to solve social issues or social problems. And I think, right now, I think the focus needs to be on creating some kind of civic engagement, civic pride around Commerce City, and taking a step back and looking at the growth. Not that it's not a good thing or that I'm opposed to it. I just think there's a lot of liabilities involved with the growth right now. I look at the Dog Track project, and I think the idea that it can generate revenue for the city, that's great. But at the same time, there's some additional liabilities that come along with that. Costs go up. And so right now, I think the priority really should be to figure out how we can bring the community together, how we can develop that property to benefit the people within that community in the south part of Commerce City. And eventually, tying in the north and the south communities to work together as one.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Renee Bullock. I'm the mayor pro temp. Question number three: The city image was one of the most concerning issues in recent surveys taken by our citizens. What, if any, would you do to continue to improve Commerce City's image?
So, yeah, and I can relate to that firsthand. I know, growing up, I would, I wouldn't say that I was from Commerce City. You know, I remember going to school in Trinidad. People would ask me where I was from, and I would say, oh, I'm from Denver. So I definitely think that the reputation of the city needs to, the city, the community, we need to reinvent our image. And I, really what I think is that, moving forward, we need to be innovative. We need to lead by example. We need Thornton and Brighton and other communities to look at us and say, wow, look at what Commerce City is doing. I wish we would have done that first. So being original and doing something different, whether it's around economics, around development and growth, or, again, just pushing something along the lines of civic pride and engagement. I think a start would be to focus on really narrowing down how the city can work with the school district. And I think that's something that I had experienced, that there always seemed to be a disconnect between the city and the school district. And now that I'm involved with the school district and doing different things, it's, there's some collaboration there, but I think with the demographics that you're working with in this part of Commerce City, there needs to be more involvement from the city. And again, really driving the fact that education is important, especially for the students and the youth that are in this area. And I think, whether it's a virtual campaign around Commerce City, you know, expressing how important education is, working with, I know just, and I'll throw some numbers off the top of my head, I know right now the school district is at 90% free and reduced lunch. Of those 90%, 80% are Latino. Of the 80%, 60% are English second language learners. And so I think, right there, when you look at those numbers, I says, we need to really narrow down and focus with that group. How we do that, I don't really have the answers, but I think there's a way to get to it, working with the school board and working with the city. So, does that answer your question?
It's your answer, so I will stick with it.
Perfect, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Steve Douglas, Council at Large. Thank you for being here tonight, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you.
Next question is, what would you like to see accomplished, short term and long term, in the north and the south part of the city?
I think, I think, short term, where we can start is, again, opening up those lines of communication between the school district and seeing what the needs are out here, and reaching out to the north part of Commerce City. Now, I'm not just generalizing, but I think I can, I can say that there's, there's a, there is a difference. It's a more affluent area. There's, you know, and just, I think what the north part of Commerce City can offer to the south Commerce City is partnering, again, with our school district, providing some type of mentoring for the youth that need that, and, again, just really kind of reintegrating together. So I think, short term, focusing around education and the needs of the youth in this area would be great. And I think the north part of Commerce City has a lot to offer. I think in the long term, I think, again, I stated this in my application, but I think in the long term, it's still focused around education. There's always going to be the differences regardless. But I think letting this part of Commerce City know that you value them just as much as the north part of Commerce City, and doing that, again, around pushing civic pride, civic engagement, and getting both communities involved.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Gonzalez. My name is Crystal Elliott, City Council at Large. And I have a last question, which is a very lengthy question, so I'll read it in full, and then I'll break it down into pieces, so it's a little more easier to understand, okay? Please provide us with a brief description of the city budget and the council's role in the budgetary process as you understand it. Also, please include total budget in dollar amounts, example of key sources of revenue and expenditures. Okay, so I'll go back to that first part. Please provide us with a brief description of the city budget and council's role in the budgetary process as you understand it.
So I believe this year, the budget was approved for just over 50,000, or 50 million, I'm sorry. And I know that was broken down into parks and recreation, city budget, I think we had the Commerce City Police Department, so, develop, growth and development, and that's the understanding I have for now.
Okay. And then, second half would be, also, please include total budget in dollar amounts, which you did, example of key sources of revenue and expenditures.
So, I mean, I know the main expenser, the expense that costs the city the most right now is the police department. And I think that was somewhere around 14 million, if I remember correctly. I think a lot of the money is also distributed to Adams 14 from funds received through property tax. So, so I guess, overall, I have a limited, I have limited knowledge of the budget and the structure and where it's going. I have some specifics that I could explain, but I guess, along those lines, I'm not as familiar as I should be.
That's okay. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Gonzalez, I want to thank you for coming in. You do still have some time left that you can expand on anything you'd like to. It's your time to talk to the council.
Sure. So I guess, one thing, and again, my intentions for doing this, I want to learn and grow in a position like this. I want to serve my community. I think the community in Ward one, I can really relate to them through my experience as a kid, growing up, and even coming back to Commerce City and just, again, understanding the struggles and the barriers that, not only the youth, but the family and the parents experience. I was raised by a single mother on public assistance, and the struggles were endless. And so at this point, I think my goal is really to lead by example, to be the voice of reason to anyone that's involved in my life. I think, for the city and my goals, again, I'm thinking that if we can reinvent ourselves, then Commerce City's not going to have that reputation it had. Being innovative around economics, an idea that I've always had, is that individuals always plan for retirement, right? So why can't a city plan for retirement? Why can't they have a long-term goal to be, to fund their own government? Something like a portfolio or whatnot, where you invest a certain amount of money every year, compounded interest, and over a long period of time, you'd have this surplus of money for our youth, for our school district, for the city in general to survive off of. And so I think my goal would be to just bring new ideas, innovative ideas, again, to be a voice for the community and represent Commerce City to the fullest. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much for coming in this evening, and we look forward to seeing you again.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Sean.
The way we're doing this is you'll get asked five questions by the council. You have 15 minutes to respond. At the end of the questions, you have the right to utilize the rest of the 15 minutes that are unused to expand on anything you'd like to the council. I want you to start off with your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Gene Lefel. My address is 6530 Brighton Boulevard. That's in Commerce City, Colorado, and that's the Garden Terrace subdivision established in 1922.
And we'll start off over here with Mr. McAlvey.
Thank you, and welcome, Gene. Can you please give us the main reason that you're seeking the position?
Well, I've lived here in Commerce City now for a little over 30 years, and frankly, Commerce City's been quite kind to me. It's provided me a home, place to operate my business, raise my family, my two sons. And I feel now that I would like to try to give back some of what Commerce City's been giving to me and make that available for others.
Thank you very much.
Hi, Gene. Can you hear me?
Yes.
The next question is, please explain what you see as the most pressing matter for the City Council in the next term, and what do you think you can contribute during the remainder of the term you are seeking to fill in order to help solve or overcome these issues? Do you want me to do it again?
That's a multi-part question.
Wait till you get to number five.
Very nice. Well, what I, I think I can contribute, I do have quite a bit of council experience, eight years of practical council experience, and I've witnessed the challenges that the city faces. And I feel I could constructively help. I don't have the answers to all the problems, but I certainly am aware of what we're facing. And without a review of that question, I may, may need a little more help.
I can read it again if you want, and then you can decide.
Well, I want to make sure I covered all the points on there, and it was a multi-point question.
So the question was, please explain what you see as the most pressing matter for the City Council in the next term, and what do you think you can contribute during the remainder of the term you are seeking to fill in order to help solve or overcome these issues?
Well, in regards to the point of the remainder of the term, I won't need a lot of training. I would step into the position already up to speed. So I think that in itself is a worthwhile contribution. As far as the pressing issues, I think that we really need to be able to stabilize and maintain what we've already built as a city and to move forward in a way that will be continuously sustainable. You have to maintain what's established while you strive to create more, but creating more, you also have to create the way to maintain that more, because it all comes with a price.
Evening, Gene. Question number three: The city's image was one of the most concerning issues in the recent surveys taken by our citizens. What, if anything, would you do to continue to improve Commerce City's image?
Well, an image is a very difficult thing. It seems as though people always remember the bad points, and the good points are quite quickly forgotten. Those that look at the city with a very open view and perhaps never have heard those less desirable things about our image, I don't think would ever really see us as having a bad image. So it's really a problem from the past, people have a hard time forgetting. The city of Commerce City is really poised in such a position. We offer nearly everything I think anybody could want. Our scope is very, very broad. In order to change that image, and this has been a topic that has been brought up every since I can remember, will be, will be difficult. But I would certainly do everything I could to. But I, I would certainly do everything I could to attempt to move that image into a more positive direction.
How are you, Gene?
I'm doing just fine, thank you, Jim.
Okay, question number four. What would you like to see accomplished short-term and long-term in the north and south parts of the city?
Well, the short-term, it's, I think really, the short-term's hard to do anything in the short-term. People look for very quick results, and in the, in a, in a city, one, one thing I have learned is things seem to happen on a very slow scale. I mean, everybody knows what they want, but in order to accomplish those things is, is quite difficult. The, the north range of the city has finally gotten many of the things that they were desperately in need of. Shopping, grocery store, those, those were probably in the minds of those northern residents, very longcoming. But I think in the scope of the entire lifespan, if you will, of the city, which is effectively eternal, they really came quite quickly. If you, if you look at how long it took to get things in the core city, they've happened actually quite quickly up north. I, I think several of the things that people in the north range seem to be asking for, they, they seem as though they would like to have a, a rec center that's more centrally located to their area. I, I think that's a real pertinent thing. The other thing that I've heard repeatedly throughout the council meetings is that they would like some outside recreational opportunities, which primarily seems to consist of developing some of the park sites that they were really promised when they purchased their homes in those areas. And those sites, again, they take a lot of maintenance, and you'll have to be able to fund those park sites. But that's a thing I think that people are really asking for, to have those fields improved into more of a park and to get a, a recreational center that's not privatized to effectively one city, one subdivision, excuse me, but yet open to all the residents of that area. Those are the two things that I, I come to my mind as hearing the most.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Hi, Gene, how are you?
All right. Renee, how are you doing this evening?
Very well, thank you. This last question is a doozy, and I'm gonna break it down into two sections. I'm gonna read the whole question, then I'm gonna let you break it down into the two sections. Please provide us with a brief description of the city budget and the council's role in the budgetary process as you understand it. That's the first part. Also, please include total budget dollar amounts, examples of key sources of revenue and expenditure. So, the first part would be, please provide us with a brief description of the city budget and the council's role in the budgetary process as you understand it.
Okay. Well, the, the budget, in my mind, is somewhat of a living document. I mean, we're, we're required to present a balanced budget. The council's role, I mean, as I've sat through these budget retreats several times, each department comes in and then they present their initial budget, and then everybody gets told that, well, you gotta take a little bit more off, and those budgets come back, and eventually, it's all fit to where it actually works. I, I think the council's role primarily is giving the final approval, certainly, that's a, a point in the budget, but also perhaps giving the guidance of how you're gonna appropriate money throughout the different departments, because naturally, each department would like to have a, a huge chunk, but they, they need to have an appropriate amount. So, I, I think that kind of covered the first portion.
Okay. Now, the second portion. Also, please include total budget dollars in dollar amounts, examples of key sources of revenue and expenditure.
Okay. Well, I knew I should have really called in and double-checked the budget, but as I recall, the budget is roughly fifty-four million dollars. I always kind of look at it in my mind that apparently it takes about a million dollars a week to run a city of our size. I don't think the average person would ever fathom that, but I believe it's, it's very close to fifty-four million dollars. As far as key sources of revenue, and the one that I always think of, because it's in Ward One, right down the street from my house, is the refinery. That provides roughly one-third of the city's budget, roughly, and I may be a little off limits, but approximately fifteen million dollars a year coming from the refinery. As far as where that money goes, I think two of the largest places where, where money goes is through Public Works, which maintains the roads and, and other projects throughout the city. And I think probably close to Public Works budget would be the police department, which provides safety for the citizens.
Okey-dokey. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Lefel, you have some time left. If you'd like to use it any way you want to expand on anything else that you'd like to address the council with, that's your time to utilize.
Well, thank you, Sean. I don't know how much time that is, but I, I would like to say to the council and remind everybody that I have been here for the last eight years. I've attended nearly every council meeting in its entirety during that time. That is a very substantial commitment of time. I don't see, really, any other person that has volunteered that amount of commitment to our city to study this position and understand it very well. I've lived here my entire adult life in Commerce City, raised my family. I have a substantial investment into this city, and I would like to give back to the city that's provided me that opportunity. I've done a lot of volunteer work throughout the city as well, on many different organizations. Ten years with Community Enterprise alone, doing little picnics throughout the city, clean-ups and other work in the city. I also organized a group for that very purpose of helping people, senior citizens and others, keep their properties maintained and help them to effectively beautify their area in the city. I'm at a lot of city events. I don't go to every single thing, but I participate quite often. Memorial Day Parade, Derby Winter Festival, I, I did all the work there for years, set those hundred trees and lit them all up. All the, at, at one point, and I can't quite say today, I had been to every single outreach picnic there was, visited with all the neighbors throughout the city, listened to what they have to say, find out their opinions and what they think's going on. Many of them speak very candidly when you're in a private situation, and will say things that probably wouldn't come out publicly, and they've imparted that knowledge to me about what they think. When I wrote for several years for the Beacon, I always asked people to call me and contact me, and hundreds of them did, told me what they thought. And I think I have a, a very broad scope of experience that I could give to the council and the city if I was only given the opportunity to do it. I'll remind people, this is my fourth interview of this type, the fourth one. I'm not just a Johnny-come-lately on the spot, I'm here for the long haul, and I'll be here the whole time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lefel.
Thank you, Sean.
Brian?
Mr. Mayor, I was simply going to suggest that now that the interviews are completed, unless Mr. Grigo has arrived.
Would you please check to see if Mr. Grigo has, has arrived?
Once the interviews have concluded, we would simply suggest taking a five or ten-minute recess to stretch your legs and allow the QCI members to come into council chambers.
Still snowing outside, Gene?
I was locked up in a room across the hall, I have no idea.
But it was when you came over?
Oh, when I came over, it was coming down like crazy.
When I came down about four thirty.
We stopped over at McDonald's, and I think there was that much snow on the truck when we come back out from leaving.
It came down quick.
And lots of it.
It's a good wet snow, too. I'm glad of that, that it's gonna give some moisture. I'm not happy for the snow, but I'm glad it's wet.
Okay, that was fun.
I, I think that he thought about it. If it didn't have a perfect sunny day, he might have showed up.
Does the guy live close there? Does the guy live close?
Yeah, he lives right over by the dog truck. I mean, he lives on sixty, yeah, I mean, sixty. Right. No, no. Oh, no.
What's funny, I haven't seen him up at the dog truck. I haven't seen him up at the rec.
He said that he caught it in time so that his dogs didn't rip it to shreds. But they, they're pretty, they're not dangerous dogs. I keep telling him about that.
Talk to you later.
How are you, buddy? How you doing, sir?
Pretty good.
Good. I guess we can air talk here. There's a sipping. One, two, three, four, five about meeting.
How are you?
Starting.
Yeah.
Regardless of how far we think we're gonna go, just get somebody to do some input into it. Say...
There's plenty of room for the QCI members to come up and sit around the table up here. So, please come on up.
We could pass an ordinance. You know, maybe it'd be a charter issue.
Good evening. Thank you all for being here. Sorry you had to wait a little while. We were doing some interviews. But we're gonna get started with the study session, and I believe that Ms. Ram Cordero is gonna kick us off with the QCI... Brian? Brian will kick us off with the QCI discussions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening again, council, and a special welcome to our QCI stakeholder members. Thank you for being here tonight. This is a very exciting night. It's the culmination of literally months of work by these dedicated stakeholders from our community. One quick request from the group. They do have quite a lengthy presentation that was included... I think we sent it out. Have we sent it out yet? It was attached to the city manager's report tonight. The group would like the opportunity to review the presentation in its entirety before council begins asking questions. So if you would hold your questions to the end of the presentation, the members would be very, very grateful. The plan tonight is to have the group present their recommendations. These are not simple matters. These are complex issues, and they're here tonight to present those recommendations after months of intense study of these issues. The goal is to have them present the recommendations tonight, give city council the opportunity to ask clarifying questions. But the goal was not to begin having council discuss those recommendations in detail tonight. We've planned the morning of the council retreat on Saturday for this purpose. It would be tough to give the recommendations their justice tonight, I think, given the time limitations on the agenda tonight and the fact that there are other items on tonight's agenda. So the goal was to present the recommendations, give council the opportunity to ask clarifying questions, and then Saturday morning, we've budgeted most of Saturday morning for council to discuss these recommendations in great detail. So that's the plan for tonight. Before kicking it over to Ms. and the QCI stakeholders, I did want to thank the group on behalf of city staff. As I mentioned, this has been an extremely difficult task. It's an issue many communities are wrestling with. Since the city began looking at updating its long-range financial plan two or three years ago, we've known that this issue is looming. The group has made selfless contributions over the last year-plus to study these issues in detail and try and craft what are very difficult recommendations. The group demonstrated tremendous teamwork. The group of stakeholders comes from diverse backgrounds, and they've exhibited tremendous teamwork in trying to share thoughts and ideas and wrap their head around these difficult recommendations. And I would say, based on my initial review of them, the recommendations are extremely thoughtful. There are no easy answers to the city's long-range capital needs, but I think you'll find that their recommendations are extremely thoughtful and with excellent consideration of the information and analysis that staff provided, and also based on a lot of community input. And then finally, I'd like to thank the city staff that's also worked tirelessly on this project, probably nobody more so than Ms. It's been his primary responsibility to provide key staff support to the group, help manage agendas, help make sure information was available timely and thorough. He had an excellent supporting cast from Roger Tinklinberg, Jim Hayes, Chris Kramer. A number of members of the city staff helped provide information and analysis to the group. So it's, again, a tremendous culmination of months of work that brings the group here tonight. And with that, I'll turn it over. Are you gonna start, Ms.?
Thank you, Brian. Mayor, members of council, before they start the presentation, which I'll kick over to Mr. Jimmy Byrd, I would like to ask all the members of the Quality Community Initiative who are present to please stand so that we can recognize them. Thank you. Okay, Jimmy, you can go ahead.
Good evening, mayor, council, staff. I'll be laying out our agenda and telling you why the QCI was formed. The agenda tonight is to tell you the purpose, the QCI's process, the result and final recommendation from the QCI, and then the key issues for council to consider. The QCI was formed in November 2011 by city council. We were given a charter to carry this out. The QCI includes diverse representation of Commerce City residents, business owners, nonprofits, developers, and landowners, and utilities and other stakeholders. Our mission was to conceptualize the needs of our growing community as proposed by the city's long-range financial plan, then to obtain feedback from the community, and develop a set of recommendations for city council on how to proceed. The charter was from you, but that's the basics of it. I won't go into the details of it. And I believe I turned it over to Maria now, correct?
One moment, please. You know, we have a lot of viewers at home, and I just... Most of us know who each other is. Do you think it'd be okay just to do a quick introduction of the QCI so that the folks at home know who's who and whether they represent a business, the community, or a nonprofit or what have you? I think that will help.
All star. Good evening, everyone. My name is Maria Gonzalez, and I am the owner of Gonzalez Insurance here in Commerce City.
My name is Laura Kucharzak, and I am a resident of Commerce City.
I'm Sandy Kula, I'm also a resident of Commerce City.
I'm David Foster, I'm an attorney with Foster Graham, with a number of labor projects in Commerce City.
I'm Jimmy Byrd, owner of Color Graphic and property owner here in Commerce City.
And I am John Overstreet, resident of Commerce City.
I'm Delilah Collins, and I am a resident of Commerce City.
I'm Bob Felsberg, with Felsberg-Holton-Olivage, and we're transportation engineers.
I'm Preston Gibson with Xcel Energy.
I'm Rich Gonzalez with United Power.
I'm Kristy Jocelyn Martin with Community Insights.
Scott Jake with Commerce City, city residents.
I'm Steve Hunter with South Adams County Water and Sanitation District.
Sandy Metro with Adams Sports.
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity to serve in this committee. We definitely, as a group of different stakeholders, had a lot of work, and I really appreciate everybody's knowledge and resources. But we, as a group, you know how hard it is to get everybody together to a meeting. We were able to meet every three weeks from December 2011 until November of 2012, and we discussed so many different issues, as you could probably imagine. And one of them was about the city's long financial range plan and also the capital improvements projects, the list of every project that every city should consider when they're growing and conducting, meeting the needs of its community. We did a whole review of all of the infrastructure that needed to be updated and come up with projects that are reasonable for our growing community, as well as understanding what it would cost to complete all of those projects. We, as a group, put in the list in a priority order based on different categories. We reviewed so many different potential funding opportunities that we would like to present to you for each one of the projects. We also studied many different alternatives of bringing all of these projects to reality to better meet the needs of our community. We conducted several community outreach meetings in English and Spanish throughout different parts of the community, trying to really unify everybody through seventeen focus groups and bring in everybody's feedback. We came, we believe, with the recommendations are based on the priorities, the ways that we prefer to find those, fund those projects. We also had some very specific principles. As you know, Commerce City, it's always important to conduct, to do the right work, because we want to make sure that we're always listening to what the citizens want and need. We wanted to figure out how we can manage what we currently have, but also catch up with the current needs and continue to match the growth of our community. But we also wanted to be, to take the initiative to bring the importance of the South and the North, and to ensure that both areas come together as one community, as unified population, that everybody's really important. And also, we were looking for the funding decisions to be a shared responsibility. We understand that it's not just the city's fault, but as a city and as a citizens, we can come back together and work together for the betterment of our city, because that ensures ownership from us to see the prosperous of our community. And we want to make sure that, as a community, we take action now and implement those projects as soon as feasible, because this will demonstrate back to our citizens that this is a serious undertaking and that we've done the diligence of work to come back with those recommendations. And we are a striving city, and I think we're ready to move forward.
So now, I'm gonna go through the project recommendations. As Maria mentioned, we, starting out, reviewed the city's long-range financial plan, and we really used that as a starting point to review kind of the numbers and the data. And we had that plan was presented to us by different members from city staff. And then we took that, and we really tried to blend that with all of the feedback we received from the community in the listening sessions and also via the survey. So the recommendations we have tonight for the specific projects are really a blend of that. We're also trying to look at things that would really help promote economic development within the city, and then also really address kind of the infrastructure and safety needs of the city, and also just the community amenities and that kind of thing. So, all of that blended together, I'll start. We divided the recommendations into five different groups. The first one is transportation. As we were going through the listening sessions and the survey, transportation received extremely high support as a category from the community. I think both, we looked at this as an opportunity to really promote economic development, and then also just to relieve congestion and really just help with, you know, making your way through the city. So, on the list, and I'll go through these kind of high level, the first one is the tower road widening from four lanes from 120th down to 80th Avenue. And again, as we're going through the sessions, this was really the one project that received the highest amount of support of the transportation projects in particular. The next two are kind of a combination of railroad-grade separations combined with widening, so the widening kind of being a necessary project in conjunction with the railroad-grade separation. So those are at 96th Avenue from I-76 to Highway 2, and then 88th Avenue, again, from I-76 to Highway 2. Again, those received really high approval from the community, I think just folks that have to wait at the railroad tracks and that kind of thing. And then also, we also really looked at that as an opportunity to help a lot of the industrial businesses in that area and alleviate congestion there. The last of the transportation projects was Rosemary Street from 80th to 88th Avenue, that widening, and that's really, you know, kind of a conduit which alleviates congestion on Highway 2, and that was why that one was on the priority projects list. The next category that also received extremely high support from the community is parks, trails, and recreation. And so, probably the single most project that received the most support was a large community park. And so, the location on this would need to be investigated a little bit further, whether it would be near First or Second Creek, but there was really a lot of feedback... it would be near First or Second Creek, but there was really a lot of feedback that a very large community park that would allow for more ball fields and organized sports was really necessary somewhere in the city, just to give more opportunities for families and kids and that kind of thing, and then also just to meet other recreational needs. The following two are related to rec. centers, the first being renovations to the existing rec. center and making improvements there, and then also building a new north rec. center. And the new north rec. center would help alleviate some of the burden on the existing rec. center in terms of capacity, which is already at capacity, and then make some improvements at the existing rec. center as it is now. Next, we have stormwater. So as we were going through the listening sessions in particular, there was a little bit, I'd say, of an education piece that happened, had to happen on the stormwater component, just because a lot of people didn't really realize the importance of implementing these projects. So initially, it didn't get a lot of support, say, at the listening sessions, but once we started educating folks on what it really involved and the public safety aspect of it, there was definitely a higher support level for it. So, just from, I think, that perspective, and then also just being proactive and trying to eliminate, you know, drainage and flooding problems in the future, we think it's really important to implement all of the priority projects here. We didn't break them out. There were, I think, a number of different projects for different areas, but this is kind of that piece in total. So, that was the next recommendation. Public safety and city infrastructure, the one project there that got really high support was for a new police substation in the north, and that was really deemed as being necessary just to improve response time and just generally increase safety in that part of the city. And then lastly, we have arts and culture. And the one project there that received really high support was for a cultural arts center and museum, and that would really be to, you know, help educate the city and provide another opportunity for, you know, just citizens to learn about the city and have pride in the city. And we think, just long-term, that's a great amenity to have for a growing community. So that wraps up the recommendations. Sandy's going to talk about the funding strategies.
Pardon me? Is it on now? Okay. I'm going to give you a review of the funding strategies package that we're presenting to you to, for your consideration. In our QCI process for developing funding strategies, we identified nine potential funding mechanisms. We thoroughly reviewed those and sought community input and support on those nine. The factors that we looked at as we were trying to identify each of these potential funding mechanisms included how much revenue would be generated, is the mechanism applicable to the type of projects that we are funding, what is the community support for that particular type of funding, and what are the requirements for implementing that as a source of revenue, which can range all the way from city council support only to taking to a vote of the public, maybe additional legislation or administrative, you know, actions need to be taken before you can enter into that. So, we selected six funding strategies for the council, and we're submitting it to you as a package, more or less, for you to use. And why were the six that we are presenting to you selected? First of all, they received the widest amount of community support as we went through the listening sessions, as well as the written mail survey that we received. Want to reiterate, we took our guiding principles all throughout this whole process, as we educated ourselves, as we went out to the community. And so, again, we aligned this part of our process to our guiding principles, including equity and balance, and that is in all ways, the north and south part of the city to, you know, get a unified population, make sure we're meeting the needs, taking a balanced look at what priorities specifically that we took. And in this case, with funding, Maria's already mentioned it, shared ownership and responsibility with the city council, as well as the public at large, because we want to make sure that ethical sacrifices for all stakeholders are, you know, maintained with our maintain, catch-up, and build-for-the-future process. So, the first two funding strategies that are going to be presented to you to look at, these are ones that require city council approval. At the columns at the top of the headers with revenue, that's annual estimated revenue. Community support, the way we arrived at those percentages were, we melded the mail survey responses, as well as the responses that we received at the listening, community outreach section, so that's kind of an average. And we've included some comments and maybe some suggested direction for you. So the first for city council approval is increase in impact fees on new development. This was based on a 200-home development, annual estimated revenue of approximately $400,000, had high community support, and a suggestion is that the increase should be dedicated to transportation only. The second is the stormwater utility fee, estimated approximately $3.3 million annually, had a 51% approval or support. And the suggestion is that implementation could be phased in with an additional cap on fees based on income where that might be appropriate. The second page lists the four funding mechanisms that would require going to the voters for approval. The first being a new special district for parks, trails, and recreation, and estimated revenue approximately $10 million a year, and as you can tell, that had very high community support of 62%. The figures in the column are the existing O&amp;M, the debt service, and new O&amp;M that would come along as we develop new facilities or infrastructure. The second funding mechanism is an entertainment admissions tax, 8% above sales taxes, the figures that we use, approximately estimated revenue $575,000. This also had high community support, and in the comment column, we indicate this probably could be implemented in a phased manner also. Third, employment head tax, the figure we used was simply $5 per month, 1.8 million annually, and we made a suggestion there in terms of how this could be used for some leverage. A sales tax increase is the final, at a half cent, about $4.2 million. And again, suggestion that consideration to, the increase should be dedicated to transportation only. As I mentioned in the beginning, we did take a look at nine potential funding mechanisms. The three that we are not including in our package are the following. Number one, property tax increase, and I think it's probably fairly self-explanatory why that didn't get a lot of community support as we went out in our sessions. The second was the refuge and trash collection fee. This also got very low community support. It was considered to be an essential service from the health, safety, and even beauty sustainability, and it's really a timing issue with this. It may be necessary at some time down the future, but we felt this would probably not be a good way to get goodwill from our voters if that was one of the first mechanisms out of the chute. And the third was, we took a look at other user and maintenance fees, and I think this was a difficult one for us to deal with, as well as with the community stations in terms of being specific or really narrowing down, but it's something that is also there in the package, and assume that the city, when they're doing their budgets, that you include that in that process also. And finally, then, with the key issues that we know that you're going to be facing, there's certainly many dynamics and challenges of placing the funding strategies to a vote of the people and building a base of citywide support for their passage. And I think it's pretty obvious, getting community support is going to be absolutely critical in this area of the challenge. And one key to the success will be making sure community advocacy is a priority. And I think we've got good information from our survey and outreach meetings that certainly can be used in a way to educate the public and get more information out to them. Considering a phased-in approach, and again, reiterate, perhaps a cap to ensure the financial protection of the most at-risk citizens, depending upon the mechanism that is used, this, we feel, will ensure accountability. It'll gain community support as projects are completed as planned and kind of on time, because it's obvious we have many things to do and many things to fund, and they can't all be done at once. Then in implementing these, and Laura and the others of us have stressed, they need to be done in a way that they promote economic development, as well as meeting the needs of the community. It's obviously, new economic development will generate new additional funds and revenues as we go through working for completion of the final plan, the long-term plan, and also this is necessary to attract and retain residents within the city. Next steps. Our QCI stakeholder group, this final report is really intended just to be a first step in the process of building the infrastructure that our city needs to support its future growth and economic development. We hope the work of our group will put you in a better position to make policy decisions aimed at securing the long-range goals of the city. And the QCI, we're pleased, we're thrilled to have had the opportunity to fulfill this mission as chartered by the city council. And as I already mentioned, we've been meeting regularly since last November of 2011, and we really thank you for the opportunity and encourage the council to move forward based on the community's feedback. And I think now we're ready for questions and answers.
Council members have questions? Mr. Macaldonagh?
Before my question, I just want to say a personal thank you to every one of you for serving on this committee. When I think about the discussions that led up to council suggesting such a committee, we had talked about it a couple times in my tenure on council, and, you know, we'd gotten different sentiments from different compositions of councils. And I think the one reason that I remember talking about and driving me to think that this was the way to go was just the diversity of input that, a concentrated, and a concentrated focus that could be garnered by putting a group like you together. The output of this effort, I think, is a great example of that. We don't have the luxury, through our 42 Mondays a year, to sit down and have this depth of discussion. Your ability to interact with the community, to compile this, to reflect, to talk, and put your heads together has been invaluable, and I'm ecstatic to have this tool for us to head into our retreat this year. This is, this is great, great work. So thank you very much. I just had a couple of quick questions to confirm my understanding on a couple items. On the recommendation for the increase in impact fees, did this get any, was there any dialogue with the builder or developer community in terms of support for this? I know we've had, impact fees have been on the council discussion, or the council docket several times over the last several years, particularly when the market was at its bottom. So I'm just curious as to what level of comment was received.
So, you know, we didn't go out formally to the entire development community, but the way in which I think the whole package works is it works as a package. If, if in fact, we were trying to solve all of the, you know, multimillion dollars worth of infrastructure needs of the community vis-à-vis impact fees, I think that would be a problem. But to the extent that it's part of a package, and to the extent that we can tailor those fees to a particular improvement, you know, in this case, we're talking about transportation, something very visible and, you know, that would meet the requirements of the law as well, you know, I think it is very saleable to the community, to the development community.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. I think that's a great piece to reinforce that I heard in your comment, and that this is really, it's a package. And I think it's important for us to remember that as we consider this, and we talk about it in our retreat, that if that's, if that's how this is being put forward, that we need to really keep that in mind and not risk tampering, it sounds like, with trying to piecemeal this, because it could weaken the overall effort. So, thank you. A quick clarification, on the special district proposal, was there a specific geography for that new district, or was that a citywide district?
I think we had talked about it in terms of the new district that I think you guys are even going to be discussing later tonight. So, pretty much Tower Road, you know, to the, to the east, kind of north of 80th, kind of the unbuilt portions of downtown.
I have a correction.
Oh, you're talking about the Recreation District?
Yeah, sorry. Not the leader of J.D.
Yeah, the Recreation District would be citywide.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, no worries.
That's something, too, that considered it, it may be a special improvement slash new special district, too, because there's some overlapping legal concerns where up in the northern tier, you've already got some of those elements. So the council certainly would have to explore that mechanism a little more.
Okay. And my last question, and I will relinquish. Were there any considerations in terms of, assuming that all these measures were to go into play, all the puzzle pieces were put into place, any offset considerations or discussions in terms of city budget? I know we've talked about new funding sources, I'll use stormwater as an example in the past, part of that is designed or intended to help free up dollars out of the general fund, so those can be redirected. And so, I don't know if there was any consideration in that regard here, but that would be helpful for us to consider as well.
Everybody's looking at me. Yes, there were, and the intent was that some of these would offset and free up money in the general fund that would allow funding for some of the other capital maintenance that needs to occur, which we're not funding now.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
Mr. Bullock?
Okay, judging by, I did some quick, just adding, and all the projects come to around about $265 million, and the funding source over 20 years comes to about $420 million. If all the funding sources were implemented, you know, and I mean, I expect that, being a vote to the people, some of these might make it, some of these might fall by the wayside. So, it still seems like the more funding mechanisms we have out there, the greater chance we have of funding more projects over the long run. And to me, that's great, because we put in a contingency plan, because I know there are a lot of people that aren't going to vote to do anything to raise their taxes, even though they know it's going to help them in the long run. One of the things I didn't see, and it's probably because it's a state highway, widening of Highway 2. Was that a consideration, but it was dropped off because of it being a state road?
That's correct.
Okay. Right now, I'm going to give up my time, because I have a lot more questions, but I want the rest of council to get in.
J.D.
I never know which way to take. All right, we're on. Actually, the railroad-grade separation, where is that located? On the 96th? There's two there, is there not? Yes. Yes.
Darren?
Can I answer that? The railroad grade separation on 96th Avenue, crossing which is about midway between Highway 2 and I-76?
At home, it's the UP railroad crossing on both of those avenues. So, it'd be the west of the two railroads.
And let me back up here a second because I do want to thank all of you for the time and the effort that you put into this. Very appreciative. I think you really do have a good sense of public needs, what the public would support. You're a good mix of that. And so, I know there was a lot of time on everybody's part and a lot of commitment that you put into this, so thank you very much. The other question was, it in the rec center specifically, it says, does not include indoor swimming pool. Is that because that was a question not asked, or was that something that residents said they weren't interested in having?
The cost estimates for a new recreation center were based on a plan that was put together by a consultant several years ago. And at that time, it was not contemplated that there would be a pool in an additional recreation center, so it's just simply noting that it doesn't include that in the cost. Certainly, if that were something that would want to be added to that recreation center, would probably be in the $5 to $7 million range to add that. But I think we'd have to take a look at all of the facilities citywide and evaluate at a staff level, as well as probably some more community input, what specifically they would want to see in that particular recreation center. So, it could be in there, it could not, just depending upon probably more.
When you were getting citizen input, was there any talk about, or was it just general rec center and nobody?
It was just a very general question about a recreation center in the northern range. It was not specific to the exact elements that would be in it.
So, in other words, it's just the money value here that's not including the pool? We don't really know what people would want or support, is that, other than a rec center? Just blanketed that?
I think, and other QCI members can jump in, I think that the strong message from the community was that an additional recreation center was very important to them. And so, as Mike suggested, I think, once Council makes a determination as how they want to proceed, then there's got to be more in-the-weeds discussions in the community about what should be in it and what they're willing to fund. But the idea of another rec center is very popular.
And you also need to think about, like, the ongoing O and M as well. So, like, if you do something like that, then there's ongoing operations and maintenance and care, so.
And the other thing that actually struck me was this, the need that we are not fulfilling evidently for the young people in our city of being able to provide them a place to have their sports. Looks like it came in as a really highly wanted, needed desire of our citizens. So, honestly, everything that you've provided us here is really good, and as Jason said, this is great to go into the retreat with.
And just talking about that, a specific part, at the outreach meetings that we had, it's really a quality of life issue. And if the city's really taking the initiative to bring the quality of life that residents desire, they're asking for it. They want a place where they can go play in the yard, a big park. All of our parks are already packed. If you go to try to make a reservation, there's no dates already. There's not enough open space for our community. And throughout the core city, the south part of the city, there's not a lot of open space already. So, you know, it's going to be a tough one for you to find out the right location, but ultimately, considering that this is something that the community's been asking for a long time, yes, we have crunky sports, they're great, but they're not accessible to the community. And so, you know, they're beautiful, but our community deserves to have a place where they can call home and go and play and bring those families together for barbecuing or whatever activities they want to have. And organized events is huge as well. So, it's time to provide it.
Well, that is what jumped out at me here, was this need and desire for community, whether we're talking about a new park for all the youth to be able to play sports in, whether we're talking recreation centers, where this is where communities get together and get to know each other, cultural arts museum. Yeah, it seems to have spoke very loudly that the community has got a desire to grow and build on that need of building community, so.
And it's also keeping the residents here in our city, rather than going outside, we're trying to build that economic development part. You know, if we don't have the parks, they're going to go elsewhere and then the shopping along and the theaters along, and we have no entertainment areas whatsoever. So, yeah, we definitely pay a lot of attention to our community's wanting to have.
Well, thank you all very much.
Mr. Benson?
Thank you. I also want to thank all of you very much. I mean, this is truly pro bono work for the good of the public, and we're all in your debt for the time that you've spent on this, so thank you very much. This obviously took a lot of time and a lot of thought. On the impact fees for new development, where do you anticipate that those fees would be spent for the development of a park or parks? I mean, the Land Development Code says it should be spent where the fees are collected, but what do you anticipate?
I think it was our goal to, and again, you know, this is, I think there would still be a need to kind of get into the weeds a little bit more, but to dedicate those impact fees to the more kind of global transportation needs in the community. So, to tack on to what you already have as a transportation fee. So, these would be specific to transportation needs. You know, sometimes it's that, you know, third lane on 104th, or maybe it's on Tower, you know. That's how you keep the nexus on a fee, is you identify that larger community improvement.
Wouldn't the impact fees be far more than would be required to enhance the transportation in that area? I would think that.
I don't think so. I think you've got plenty of room. I mean, you've got tens of millions of dollars of transportation needs that we've identified that aren't necessarily identifiable to any one project. So, I think you can go beyond the scope of that project to solve for a larger community need with that fee.
I guess as I understand it, it's about $10 million bucks a mile for four lanes. Anyway, that's a lot of money. Okay.
Per lane, and that includes, I checked on that, and it's the rule of thumb, including a shoulder, it's a million bucks per mile per lane without bridges and that type of thing. Those are additional.
You're saying it's a million bucks per mile per lane, so it's only $4 million bucks a mile?
Well, then you've got shoulders, and you go to six when you do that. And then, again, you have, if you've got bridges and things like that, that's in addition to that. But that's kind of the rule of thumb, and I checked with C-DOT.
And what would you anticipate would be the boundary, I think this was a question that Mr. McAldowney asked, for the special district, for parks and trails, what would be the boundary of that?
So, again, that would be the entire city of Commerce City. Because what we're endeavoring to do is we're trying to take, somebody else's question, we're trying to take all of those expenses out of your general fund, move them into a separate district, freeze up some of those dollars for other programs.
He's saying $10 million bucks a year, and that would require taxpayer vote, that would be a tax, and it would be paid by everybody in the whole city?
Be a creation of a new, it's a special district, it's a park and rec district. You see them in a lot of local, you know, suburban communities. It's a property tax that is created from that new metro district or that new special rec district. But you see, the thing about it is that it's a very specific district that's providing a very specific resource for your community. It's not the city. It's your park and rec district that's providing recreation space, trails, open space, and whatnot.
It would be spent all over the city, and it would be collected from all over the city.
Correct.
Right, okay. And on the admissions tax, $575,000 a year, and you said there was, what does, you said there was high support for that. What is high support?
Again, the community support column there that has 62%, what we did is we combined the community input from the written mail survey that we sent out and also the multiple listening outreach communities. So, that's how we arrived at that support, and it came to the top. And it really was one of, I think it was probably the highest.
Well, it's taxing people, really, they don't even live in Commerce City. It's a no-brainer, really, yet the Council put it on the ballot back in '07, and it failed, and citizens put it on the ballot in '08, and it went down 4 to 1. I'm just wondering, has that really changed from 20% support to 62% support?
So, now if we work together with the citizens and we, everybody together, instead of just the city, and then instead of just the community, we believe that this will be supported. We, at every one of those meetings that we had, people were very, they were surprised that this city does not have this kind of tax. And so, I believe that.
I was surprised about that, too.
Yeah, I believe that we will seek that support.
Well, again, when you think about it in terms of a package, right? I mean, there's clearly one identifiable group that would oppose that kind of tax. So, you reach out to them early and often. And again, you show the rest of the package, where the rest of the folks in Commerce City, whether they be developers or whether they be residents, are all taking some ownership here. And we're asking, you know, you too, the owner of the largest facility that would be paying that tax, to be part of the solution. I mean, that's part of this package that we're talking about.
And I think it is an education thing, too. I mean, once we got out there and talked about stormwater, stormwater is not a sexy thing. But if you flood, and you'll have drainage, that is something that, my gosh, I wish it was sexy. But it's one of those things, I mean, an education process.
And that's part of the dynamics of being successful with this, is we really need to get community-wide support. It's critical. We need to get out there, we need to do advocacy, we need to do education, as he just mentioned. You know, the public really, I think the average citizen definitely needs more information and education so that they can make, you know, wise decisions. And we want to be successful as possible.
I also think that that is one of the, what you're describing, that 20% jump, 62% jump, is one of the realizations that you're understanding from having this group in place. We were able to reach out to the community, we were able to provide that education in a one-on-one setting, as well as do the surveys. So, they were getting the information in a format, in a way, that they can use and be able to make an informed decision. So, that's more along the lines of kind of what we need to do as a community in order to make sure they understand what it is that they're agreeing to. And that, again, goes back to education.
Well, I would hope that there would be 62% support, but one problem is that the last time it was brought up before this Council, the Council voted 8 to 1 against putting it on the ballot. So, you got to get around the Council, too, to get that tax vote on the ballot.
And I also think that one of the big things that came out of this year and a half process was the understanding of how much of your tax dollars are collected by the city, and how little that is out of a dollar. And I think that once you saw that on a graph, people were like, you've got to be kidding me. That's all that goes to the city? It was literally like, people were like, you've got to be kidding me. So.
And also, I think we need to qualify, too. We didn't do such an extensive, comprehensive, getting the community input from all the key sectors and factors, that this is not to be held to a statistical, you know, kind of fix kind of thing. This is, you know, based on the input that we were able to get, and we were very, very proactive in seeking that input. And we did include the various factors, whether it be individual citizens, businesses, landowners, community groups, you know, so on and so forth. So, these figures, I hope I'm communicating, they aren't, you know, statistically significant to the point of, you know, absolutism anyway.
I want to go to Jason.
That last round of discussion prompts a new question, and it's not in your packet of recommendations, but it, I think it's something that we need to take advantage of your experience in here, and that is this theme of communication and community involvement. And since I joined Council in 2007, the biggest challenge that I've seen is how do you develop and sustain a dialogue with the community? How do you help impart this knowledge on the citizens who, once I think you get the discussion going, want to know it, and then want to know more? But it's, you know, to John's point, it's not sexy, most of this stuff, until you look at what happens, you know, in the Northeast when they just suffered their hurricane, right? And then you have to deal with the fact that you do or don't have those improvements. And I think about Mr. Jakewood, who tells me about the impact on Commerce City in the '60s when this city suffered a flood. So, those stormwater improvements have very real merit. But I think the broader discussion, the broader concern is how do we sustain this discussion? How do we sustain this dialogue? And is there anything in your experience over the last year and a half that you would suggest we take into account during our retreat in terms of how to do that? My one thought here is that you're not elected officials. You're not as scary, right? There is, to me, a great, I will call it hate, right, distrust of elected officials. And part of that, in a great degree, to a great degree, I think, comes from how people view their elected officials in DC, and that sentiment tends to trickle down. You know, I think for any of you who, you all obviously have an interaction with local governments, et cetera, this is not the same thing, right? This is the government that you can take one step, and you're in the middle of the discussion. And I think that's, how do we, how do we parlay what you've done and these discussions that you've started, and how do we grow it?
I know that this is going to be a biggest challenge for City Council to bring forward. If you see this group, we're very diverse in so many different areas that we work with. You know me, I have so many connections, she's got so many connections. And I think through all of the different connections, we've been able to bring those residents that want to get involved. But I think for you, or for the entire benefit of the community, you have to be honest of what the expectations are to each one of these residents. And one of the things that we talk at almost every meeting when we're debating all of the issues, is education is a priority. You're really going to have to put in a picture of your house, and yes if you do it, or no if you don't, and how sooner or later are you going to be facing the consequences? Do you want to pay today's dollars, or you want to pay in a future dollars? And having that honest conversation, each one of you and your words, or really having, and I know it's very tough to bring a lot of people into town halls or big meetings, but there's going to have to be a lot of education and community outreach and listening sessions, more than what we already have, and just being flat-out honest. This is you, this is if we do it, and this is if we don't. If we delay, think about it, if we delay, we are so behind already in so many different, you know, transportations and things. If we continue to delay the process, then we're going to be in bigger problems. And many of us that are going to still be around are going to say, remember in 2013? We said we were going to get this fixed, and then we didn't? And so, I think it's an opportunity to be open-minded and really communicate with the citizens and get their honest support and things that are being realistic, and things that we need to fix.
I'll go to Mayor, then Jerry.
Sure. Mayor, and members of Council, also if I may, just to really, to also add another perspective to your question, Councilman McAldowney. I think all the members in QCI wrestled with the issue you're bringing about ongoing communication and engagement, and the real limitations that exist in every community, not just Commerce City. I think everyone agrees, and again, feel free to, you know, to say the contrary, Commerce City is perhaps, in terms of communication, in a better place than it's ever been in its history, right now. And there is a strong encouragement among members of QCI to continue what you've already moved forward in terms of communication. what you've already moved forward in, in terms of communication. Keep going the way you are. Um, keeping in mind that there is a reality that not everybody, it's gonna be as well-informed as you are or as these folks are. Uh, but that, um, once, if you do decide to move forward on things, it will elevate the conversation, for sure. And, uh, you will get more people interested in asking questions.
Okay.
You know, the, the other thing that wasn't as prevalent in the past is, there is a much clearer vision and path to it than, than I've ever seen here. And, and, some of these guys are gonna laugh, but, you know, I'm gonna use the words because we had a joke about, but this, this, not this idea of building a great city, but building a world-class city. And when we have that passion that says, "We can do this. We've got all the elements. We, you know, uh, geographically, we've got a lot of advantage here. There, there is so much that can happen here." And it's just that belief in that direction, you know, you know, since some of these things, you know, where they've been attempted before, there's been an economic, long-term economic development plan built, worked on, and, and massaged, and, and then we've got groups of businesses getting, uh, getting together all year long. There's just a lot more going on now than in the past in that way, too. And I think if you can paint the right picture, communication is easier now than ever with all of the electronic devices and everything, too, to get to everyone. So I think there's a lot of things that are lined up really well for us to just take advantage of this moment and, and look back one day and realize how much easier it was than we thought it would be today.
Go ahead, and then I, I gotta get back to the council with questions.
I'm sorry. Um, I just wanted to say something. Um, I worked with the city and county of Denver when we passed the A through I. Um, and one of the things that it was about was that it wasn't about council, it was about people. And I think that that's what you're looking at here, is a real, I mean, is a diverse group of people, went out into the community, and you guys can say, "It wasn't about us. We went through a year-and-a-half-long process. This is what we came up with." And I think that one of the things that I really was proud of with this group is how there is a lot more need in two hundred and whatever million. I mean, it's a lot more.
Yeah.
But you gotta look at what you can do realistically and say, "You know what? With all of these funding mechanisms, we think we can get there." And I think that that's what this group was passionate about, and not trying to burden the city. Because once you do a plan and it fails, then it comes back on the city and it looks bad. So looking at what you can do, I think that's, that is what this group did. And I'm proud of them.
Okay, I want to go to, uh, Mr. Douglas.
Thank you, guys, for, uh, put all the hard work into, uh, this QCI and coming before us today or tonight. Um, the only thing I, there's a few things I kind of struggle with, and, uh, one of them is the storm drain utility fee. Now, um, as you know, we had a, we, we had that open for discussion. It was up for vote to, to, uh, form that utility, to, uh, to establish a ordinance. And then if that passed, to set a feat to that. Well, we do have a lot of educated, uh, people in Commerce City, and they came forward and they spoke. And we didn't do our job, uh, as a city to prepare for this in the first place. And that is to map out our city, to show, because the northern area, the way that's built, it's built for long-term when it comes to storm drain and everything. It's, it's, it's here in the south, but, uh, but it's, it's a citywide issue. And, and it did, it is connected to education. So, and a lot of people like to see visuals of things to make sure, you know, if this is correct, you know, match things up and all that to, to see, "Hey, where exactly are you going?" Um, I understand about the illustration about, "Here's your house," and if, if things aren't drained properly, you could end up having some, uh, great deal of damage. And, uh, you know, we don't have flood insurance here. Most homes don't have flood insurance. Um, so, as far as moving forward some with, uh, with storm drain utility, that's something that we have to be up to speed. The city is to show exactly where, where in, where in the city are, are these improvements needed? And how long these things are gonna last? Um, you know, that's, I had brought that up several times, uh, during city council. And you have yet have seen anything to come up with a map or anything like that at all. So, we do have some work, a lot of work to do on, 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 uh, on our part to move forward. But we do have citizens that do listen, and they really are, are concerned, um, how our city's moving forward. And it's one of those things you can take, you can either stay stagnant and keep what you have, but if you want to move forward, you, you really have to have a, a long-term vision, fifteen, twenty years down the road. I mean, I base my decisions on council, uh, as if I'm not up here, uh, that, uh, well, I'm sorry, I do basically, but I'm saying as far as, um, I'm, I'm, my vote's for the people, not for myself. So, uh, I have to make sure what we set forward is gonna make a great impact ten, fifteen, twenty years from now. So we don't have to come back and, and redo something that we messed up on. And those are hard decisions here that when we, because we, we're spending money. We don't have money to, to fix roads, to, to do certain infrastructure, and then they fail, and then we, and then we, you know, "Hey, well, we can, we got enough money, we can go ahead and redo that." We don't have that. We don't have that option. So, that's what makes our job hard, is we have to get it right the first time. I guess, it's not a perfect system, um, but that's why we all work together. And I do appreciate, uh, all your time and effort that you guys have put into this. And the other thing is, um, the new special, special district for parks and recs. Uh, because of the northern infrastructure and some places, uh, um, have their own parks and some, as we know, Reunion has their own, uh, recreation center, and they, they pay high, high, uh, fees for, for being a special tax district. And I, I think this is a good suggestion. We need to look at how that could be structured, uh, so everybody is, is paying now. But if you're already paying, say, eighteen, twenty percent or so, how this is gonna impact you as well. Um, so that's, that's something that, uh, has to be, um, really dissected and looked at. Um, 'cause you're gonna get the same kickback from, from down here. You know, we have rec center down here, and why should we have to pay for up there? But it's, it's more, where can we move the city forward as a whole and not look at being selfish? Um, and, uh, as far as the number of participants that you guys did your survey, did you, was this balanced from like, phone calls? Uh, I know it's in your presentation here, but just to hear some of you guys say, as, as far as, um, do you see you say, a lot of people come to the same meetings or so? Do you get to input, they're really strong on, on what they believe that could work?
I'm sorry, what was your, your question, your last question about the same, are you asking if the same citizens came to meetings?
Right. Well, I mean, throughout the city, I mean, you guys had different, uh, meetings throughout the city, right? Did you have a group of citizens follow you and all, just to keep up on what's going on, or did you just take on new participants each time?
We, we had, uh, new participants pretty much at every single one of the meetings. We had some meetings at the church, a few churches, at, at the school. We had, uh, business meetings. Um, maybe one meeting, there were some, some duplicate of, uh, community members, uh, that went to the English and to the Spanish, probably to see if we were presenting the same material. But, uh, overall, it was all new, all new, uh, at every single one of the meetings.
And we had community meetings in the north and the south, and some general meetings. And as Maria said, with business groups, uh, and some of the other, you know, special factors. Uh, with the mail survey, uh, I don't know how many were sent out. It was something in the neighborhood of, of two thousand. And, you know, we tried to make sure we got a balance from the north and the south. And I think, uh, with the mail survey, it turned out we had a slightly higher percentage from the north on the written responses. But with the listening stations, we had a slightly higher, uh, percentage down here in the south. So it, it all kind of balanced out, and that was one of our goals, to make sure we were getting input from, you know, all sectors of the city.
Okay, thank you.
Can I, I just want to make a quick, uh, pitch. You know, Maria does sell flood insurance.
[laughing]
And so, if I didn't make sure that everybody knew, yes.
Any other council members have questions? JD?
Actually, I should've wrote some down, but since I didn't, I'm gonna save time here because I've forgotten probably half of them. Um, there's just a couple things that, that I did want to say, is that I very much appreciate that what I guess you all learned out there was that we are one community. Um, we're not north and we're not south. Because everything you have presented to us, uh, was in the form of the entire city and that we're bought into this as the city. Um, so, uh, and, and not to say anything, but this isn't about reunion. This isn't about the south. This isn't about anything. This was about the city of Commerce City and how its residents, uh, will prosper from this. Uh, it, uh, stormwater utility fee, I think, is one of those things that we are very much behind the times. And, um, if somewhere in our past this would have been implemented, um, we wouldn't be where we're at today. And so I, I do think that, uh, you are all correct, that all of you are very tied into this city. You're all a very large voice of this city. And, and the people of this city trust, I think, every single face that I see sitting up there. Um, and that you're no different than anybody else in this city. So what you found, I guess if we find that eighty percent of all the people coming to your meetings, this is what they're supporting, I'm gonna kind of figure that's probably a good voice of what didn't show up there to that. Um, you did say one thing that actually made me feel really good, that we did make a, a right decision, and that was over the trash, of keeping that as a service that we as the city provide. Um, but you were also a very good voice out there to those citizens of that is a huge amount of money that we're providing, so how do we do these other things? And, and from what I can tell here is, is our citizens very much are willing to step up to build things for a community, for an entire community to prosper. Um, so I actually, um, I, I just think that with, with the work that you have done, and, and I'm assuming, and, uh, maybe I shouldn't, but that you have so much invested in this, you're not gonna leave us now. Uh, you, you have a lot at stake here, as far as your time and it, and what you have learned. And so I, I do have great trust and faith that so much of this we will be able to accomplish with, because of the hard work that all of you invested in it. Scott, is your hand up?
Yeah, I'll wave for the finish of council.
Okay.
I just have something to say.
I will quit now. But, yeah, yeah, thank you.
Mr. Jakewood?
You know, I, I think if you looked over the five basic parts of what we're trying to accomplish here, you know, you asked about how do we educate the public? Each one of these parts of this prob, this problem are long-term financial funding. And everything that we have said as far as funding strategies really goes into directed funds for transportation, directed funds for parks and rec, directed funds for stormwater. In Mr. Douglas's statement, he basically said, "Yes, the north up now is primed, ready, and, and able to go fifty years, forty years with our stormwater." So we're talking about the city in the southern part of the city that's fifty-five to sixty years old. By starting a stormwater fund now, fifty years from now, when the north needs to start being replaced, hopefully by then we have gained enough money in a trust or into a, into a, a directed account that we can continually start to upgrade this and, and maneuver money and, and bond money against money so that we can continually not having this problem. We're at a crossroads right now of basically setting these funds aside, long-term parks and recs, so that it can continually put parks, recs, and trails, not just rec centers. We have a huge master plan, uh, open space in parks and recs that needs to be accomplished. The funding processes of this, by dedicating monies to funds, whether it's impact fees, builder fees, you can go to the public at a certain point and say, "These are your tax dollars at work. This is what your parks and rec money is going for." Uh, we have done that, some of that on ninety-six rehabilitation, when we did a lot of the intersections at ninety-six in different places around town. You're actually able to go to the public, show them, have public outreach, and say, "This is what is accomplished if we all stand together and we all participate in it." So I think it was a great year-long process. I learned a lot. It's, it's taking it from this point and saying, "Do we pool this together?" Like David said, "This is, this is part of a plan, funded plan of, of a lot of participants." And I think that it can work, and I think it can take it to the public in education as a pool and a plan. And I, I think it would work well. Thank you.
Mayor? Excuse me. Um, you know, through this whole process, there were some key words and key concepts, uh, you know, that we engaged in from the beginning, uh, to the end. And there are words like challenging. We certainly had a challenging mission and task that was set out by our charter. But we approached all of this in a diverse, an inclusive manner, in a proactive manner, um, in a balanced manner. And, uh, with the diversity just of our stakeholders represented that we had on the committee, we had at different times over thirty people, individuals that participated in this process. And those of you know me, I'm one of those that's really into, uh, public engagement and activism. And I want you to know, the everyday citizen, which I consider myself, we had equal input and involvement, and we really had proactive outreach to the community. And I think that's something extremely important, not only in our process, but continuing to, um, implement this whole, uh, thing. So, thank you.
Mr. Bullock?
In my, uh, opening, uh, comments, I forgot to thank you. And I want to thank you for all your hard work, because, um, my wife was on this committee, and I heard about your hard work many a time. I heard about it too much.
[laughing]
I felt like I was on the committee at times. So I know, um, how much work was put into this committee and, um, everybody didn't agree with everything, but in the end, what you brought forth to us is exactly what this council needs to see to move forward next weekend, when we go into our retreat and start making definite decisions on how we want to move this city forward. And like JD said, you've put in the sweat equity now. Don't think it's over. We are going to still come to you and ask for your assistance, because that's the only way we're going to get this done and get these on the ballot and, and get them approved. With the knowledge that you bring forth to the community, it's like Jason said, "They don't always believe us, but you're the same people that they are, and they're gonna sit and say, 'Why would you lie?'" So, thank you so much for your work and your time and your energy.
Counsel, do you have any more questions? I would like to, uh, to have a few words with the QCI. I know you all worked very hard. I came to at least one of your meetings. But, uh, I decided not to continue to participate in your meetings because I wanted an unbiased report when it came out. I didn't want to engage and, and sway what you guys would be bringing to, and gals, to the council. So I know you worked very hard, and I know it's very diverse. And I have to tell you, um, first of all, I'm, I'm impressed because the only way we're gonna make, uh, these kind of improvements is to have that balance between improvements that would happen in the north and the south. Everybody within the community is going to benefit. Um, we all understand that it's tough economic times, and I would agree that education is probably the key to getting anything passed. Right now, I know both of the school districts, well, primarily twenty-seven J has been unsuccessful in getting anything passed. And, you know, they, they feel that they have a need. Everybody should be making sure that needs met. Um, we as the city realize we have needs, and, and you, you spelled those needs out very well. Uh, I don't think there's anybody on this council that would not like to see the transportation improvements, the parks and rec improvements, um, the, the things that you laid out here that are gonna benefit our residents, our developers, and everyone else. The key to it is, is gonna be the education, because most of the average resident- The key to it is going to be the education because most of the average resident doesn't understand that any home that's valuation of $400,000 or less pays about $72 in city taxes that actually come to the city to get to be used. You know, we're a unique city where we don't have a water district, the water is not covered within the city. You have a separate district for water, your school districts, separate fire district. And when all those districts pull out their pieces, then there's not much left. That's $72 a year in property tax. And that's why Commerce City is driven primarily on sales and use. However, in the north is where it's going to be the biggest issue of trying to educate people because they're paying these extremely high metro district taxes. And we realize that most of those folks, you know, I get a lot of phone calls and I have for years, when they move in, they go, oh my God, look at my taxes, what's going on here? Well, it's, you know, that's why the package has to be a package because you want people in reunion to participate. They have to buy into the fact, yeah, they're paying a metro district tax and why should we build a new rec center? I'm already paying for one. And it's going to be a key to try to get everybody to understand, and I was taught a long time ago when it comes to taxes, you get what you pay for. And as the city, I wish there was a way that we could just say, you know what, let us provide all of this for you. But ultimately, it's about being responsible with what we do have and how we do spend it so that the citizen can get the most. And I can tell you, after looking at some of these, we know that from the entertainment tax, we're going to get some flak from those folks that provide entertainment that it's going to affect. We know that the head tax, I think, would be pretty much a no-brainer, other than maybe some of the businesses wouldn't want to have to deal with it. But there are some others here, like the parks and rec development fee, where I think our home builders and our developers are going to have some concerns. So, there's going to be some pressure on this council, on this group, from different groups on each and every one of these issues that we bring forward. And we have folks like up in reunion, the development, where they're struggling and every dollar is added to the cost of that new home. And, you know, we're trying to keep a balance, to keep those builders here, to continue to grow the community. But right now, with the value of the property and what they're being able to get it, sell it to home builders for and to be able to produce those homes, that has shrunk a lot over the last 10 years. And you have a piece going out for the facility fee foundation and all those other little pieces. But ultimately, we're here as a city to provide those city services that are necessary. I think you've done a great job. It's not going to be an easy decision for this council because we have to be accountable to those residents and we have to be the ones with you to partner and be able to explain what this gets you for your money. And that's going to be the hardest task because just like Mr. Benson said, we watched the entertainment tax fail. I can tell you the pressure that we'll get from developers. I'm trying to increase any fees on the development community, it's going to be great. And the entertainment district's not going to be an easy thing either. So, all around, it's going to be interesting in this economy with our residents to see what they're willing to pay for to benefit from. And all I could ask of our residents is, you know, take the step to provide yourself with what you want. And if you want those new roads and you want those areas that are going to entice new development and entertainment and recreational opportunities, then help us to help you. But we don't have just an unlimited supply of money. And when I say that, I have to tell you, we also have to look out for the education of our kids and we have to try to help the school districts to promote the dollars they need to be able to educate our students. So, it's a package deal, not just this package that you brought to us. From a community standpoint, it's a package deal that our fire district, our water district, our school districts all run properly too. So, we have to try to take what we can to the residents and I don't want to take more to them than they can bite, more than they can chew. I don't want them to, you know, to try to entice them to bite up more than they can chew. So, we have to be honest, like you said, but I think the key is to education. And I can assure you, this council is going to go over this information. And there's some very tough decisions to be made by this council. And what the end result will be, I don't know. I wouldn't want you guys to be disappointed, but I don't know what parts of the package we'll like, if not all of it. However, we'll do our job and we'll discuss it. But I think the most important thing is here, we know that you participated, you put a lot of time and effort into it and we won't let that go unnoted. So, let us use this weekend to determine how we're going to move forward, but we have to be sensitive to our residents and the development opportunities in our community as well. We've got to stay competitive in the market with the rest of the metro area. So, it's a big balance, balance that you guys made. You understand, you know, you worked on parts of that, but there's a big picture out there that is very tasking to this council. So, all I can really say is, you know what, thank you for all of your time and effort. I want to thank the staff and the administration and Ms., since he'll be leaving, all the effort and the guidance that he was able to lend. But I know you guys all worked very hard and we appreciate that and we hope you stay at the table and continue to see whatever we decide as the council to move forward on, see it through. So, thanks a lot for coming in this evening.
Thank you.
Yeah, you can.
I just want to step up the comments made a little bit and I think we have a duty to you. You guys have committed to us over an extended period of time with, as we heard, your pro bono effort to bring this effort forward to council. I think our duty to you is to make sure that we maintain this dialogue, that when we come out of our retreat, that you have a clear sense of where that discussion took us and that as we progress with the council decision-making process from here, that again, we owe you the same quality and depth of update that you've brought to us. So, I'm speaking for myself, but I would challenge my peers that we make that commitment to the QCI. I don't think we can ask them to stay at the ready or otherwise if we're not committing to reciprocate.
Anyone else have any comments before we take a short break and let those who want to go on home, go home before we continue with the rest of our meeting?
If I could just make one to address what you're saying is that there are places in there where we said these can be phased to help you with what you're talking about. And also, the priority of the projects that will create economic development, that, you know, if we're at a low time and we're going, you know, with the current businesses increasing their business and then adding new, some of that burden will be able to go away as we start to create new revenue sources through sales and use tax, which like you said, is the number one way of raising revenue anyway. And I think with the priorities that we have and the ability to phase things in, I think we've addressed a lot of those problems that you're going to deal with this weekend.
Great. Anyone else? Thank you all for coming in.
Thank you.
We'll go ahead and take a short break and then we'll come back to talk about the other topics that we have for this evening.
All right, we're gonna go back into session now. And we'll, uh, we're gonna start on the General Improvement District. E C A G I D. E 470 Commercial Area, General Improvement District. Uh, Roger or Jim?
If I might provide a brief introduction before we pass it over to Mr. Hayes. On the theme of long-term capital needs in our community, Roger and Jim are here to present to you an update on a funding mechanism for funding needed capital improvements in the E 470 corridor. And so with that, I'll, uh, pass it over to Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. I'm gonna just run through this presentation very, very quickly, because there's a lot of written material in your packet, as well as a lot of maps that are part of this presentation that we can refer to when we get into the discussion. Uh, I'm sure all of you are aware of the Northern Infrastructure General Improvement District, as you are the Board of Directors. Uh, that was, uh, formed in 1997, again, to provide a lot of the infrastructure in the northern range. It started with, uh, water and sewer, and then later, uh, included the 104th Avenue and transportation improvements. Uh, we started this process, uh, really to try to identify how we could fund more infrastructure, essentially Tower Road and east, all the way over to DIA, from essentially Peña Boulevard, all the way up to roughly 120th Avenue. Uh, one of the things we were very cognizant of is the existing mill levy on those existing residents in the existing GID. Uh, we thought the better approach would be to get the property owners, uh, in that area together, uh, and then, uh, start to have a series of stakeholder meetings to identify the, the issues. Uh, so I've got a brief outline here of what we want to talk about tonight. Uh, the summary of the meeting is actually attached to your packet, and I'm not gonna go over that, because, as you'll see, we went, uh, kind of around and around with the amount of infrastructure that we wanted to try to fund with this option. Uh, we have identified some priorities. Uh, I was a little hesitant to put them in any specific order, uh, but, uh, there, there is a list there, and we did attempt to prioritize them. Uh, there were also several rounds of cost estimates that we looked at, uh, starting with a, a $1 billion price tag, um, and then we, uh, ratcheted that down, and then we had some series of meetings with the Water District and Public Works, and we sharpened the pencil, uh, to kind of the bare minimum of what we would need to serve this area with roads and water and sewer. So I've got some maps, I've got some alternatives that we developed, and then, uh, a recommended approach that we are ready to proceed on, uh, very quickly here in the spring, so that we can, uh, possibly get something on the ballot if we wanted to try to issue debt, uh, next year. So again, we had, uh, four meetings, uh, from February through October of 2012, and although that is not as, uh, robust as the, uh, QCI did, uh, you'll see from the numbers here, we were dealing with was, uh, pretty substantial, uh, as they were too, but we had a lot of research to do in between the meetings to try to get, get a handle on it. Um, again, the details are included in the attachment. Uh, during the process, we were continually updating the group on the QCI progress, uh, because, uh, as you'll see here, the, the common project that we came up with together was Tower Road. Uh, we identified this, uh, right off the bat as one of the top priorities. Uh, Tower Road and Peña Boulevard, the interchange, uh, we discussed that at the, uh, the meetings. Uh, of course, we've got an alternative funding source through E 470 to, to cover that, but it was definitely part of the, those discussions that that group wanted an update every time we met. The initial cost estimates that we came up with from, uh, the Public Works Department was $336 million, uh, and, again, there's a map at the back of the presentation that shows what that included. Uh, and the cost estimates from the South Adams Water and Sanitation District was $60 million, again, for public water and public sewer in that area that I was describing. Currently, all properties that would be developing in the city are required to join the existing GID, or this new GID for water and sewer services. That's because the pipes connect, uh, all the way through the existing GID. Uh, but we really looked at this as an opportunity to provide a financing option to get Tower Road widened quicker. So again, this is the existing GID map. Uh, the real distinction here that you need to note is the, uh, the areas in white are not in a GID yet, and the areas that are, uh, colored have, uh, joined the GID over a period of years, and, uh, those reference of the GID actions that were taken over time. So we identified a few alternative approaches right out of the gate. Uh, one was to create a new GID that included all the infrastructure needs, a full 10 square miles of development. The other one was to try to break it, uh, where the sewer lines would flow, so identifying the Second Creek Basin and then the Third Creek Basin as a logical breakpoint, roughly 104th Avenue. Um, what we ended up with was, uh, the idea of creating two new GIDs based on land uses. So the one that's before you tonight is, uh, the commercial one. Uh, we really didn't have a residential developer identified, so we're kind of putting that on the back burner for now. Uh, but if this was implemented, it would be really a, a checkerboard approach, where you would have, uh, multiple land uses, uh, right next to each other, and you'd have different GIDs. The reason the group came to that conclusion was because there's different taxing structures for commercial properties versus residential, thanks to Gallagher, uh, as well as, um, commercial property owners and developers take a little different approach in their location, uh, decisions versus residential. So the proposal is to create a, a, a second GID. Uh, it would start out in the Second Creek Basin, but, again, could continue as far as north as 120th. It would only include commercial properties, uh, and we would start with the DIA Tech Center property, which is Chris Thompson's piece. If you recall, you, uh, recently, uh, approved a planned unit development for that property about a year ago when it was annexed. Uh, you recent, recently acted on a, uh, economic development incentive for a hotel on that property, uh, and so he is the one that is probably the, uh, most likely to develop first out of all the properties we talked to out there. Uh, just in general, priorities were water, sewer, uh, Tower Road widening. Uh, we discussed the 88th and E 470 interchange, which does not exist right now, um, as well as all of the section line roads, which included 88th, 96th, 104th, as well as Piccadilly and Himalaya, which are east of Tower Road up near the airport, that don't even exist in most places right now. So again, the details, I'm gonna skip through this relatively quickly here, but again, we identified, uh, the DIA Tech Center property as a priority. Uh, there is a parallel water line in Tower Road, um, there's an easy connection to the Second Creek Force Main, uh, and there are some safety improvements that he has to make on Tower Road as part of his project. Uh, but as you'll see as we get into more of the details, uh, he is a willing participant now and is gonna be working on a petition to form this, this GID, and I'll explain it a little bit, how that's gonna work. The other properties we identified were, were the Cali properties. Uh, they have several holdings that are, uh, just west of DIA. Uh, just a correction to this slide, uh, water and sewer combined are $30 million, and it seems like a very large number, but it includes, uh, a variety of improvements, including a reservoir near 96th Avenue, uh, a transmission line that has to run about five miles to the west to loop the system. Uh, it, it's just the bare minimum that is gonna be required out there by the district to serve that with public water and sewer. They also identified a lot of road improvements. Uh, the most important one, we, we think, on this list is actually Piccadilly Road to 78th Avenue, uh, running north and south, and possibly connecting into the Frontage Road, uh, on Peña Boulevard there. So again, I'm, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on, on these slides, uh, or the maps, um, we can reference them as we get into the discussion. Um, again, the, the Tower Road number here is, uh, identical to what QCI presented. This is a four-lane section from 80th to 104th Avenue. Uh, the other improvements that you see here, uh, are also, uh, many miles of, of roadway, some of which, like, Piccadilly don't even exist right now. Uh, the initial cost estimate that we came up with was, was well over $100 million, as you see here. Uh, we've tried to, to ratchet that down where possible. If there's some interim sections that we could put in where there's no road now, if we can just get two lanes of asphalt on the shoulder and some ditches to get things going, uh, we're definitely gonna be willing to look at that. So again, that's the map that, that represents those, those road improvements. I, I did wanna point out, just for everyone's benefit, there is a connection here where Himalaya actually comes off a line there, and then becomes Piccadilly. Uh, that's largely because of the E 470 location there, we're trying to come up with a parallel road system that'll work for the, the development in the area. Again, very rough sketch at this point. Sanitary sewer infrastructure, um, again, the DIATC properties do not need any of these improvements necessarily to, to, uh, develop, uh, but the first one there on the list, uh, would be for the Cali properties, that $11 million for a lift station and a force main, and then if they were to develop further north, there'd be another cost. Uh, potable water infrastructure, again, you can see here, we've got, uh, well over $20 million worth of infrastructure. The big number on this list is, is Item 2A, which is that reservoir and the two transmission lines that are needed to get that system looped. Uh, that 18 million is really what is needed for the, the Cali properties to develop, so uh, that's where we get the 30 million. It's the 11 for sewer and about 18 for the, for the water. Uh, again, another map that, that shows, uh, some of the improvements that would be required, I don't know if you can see that very well, but there's some, uh, green lines and blue lines on there. The reservoir is over here, blue lines running this way, as well as some parallel lines here, and then the force main for the sewer runs in here, which would then connect into, to Second Creek. So as we move forward here, what, what we're proposing to do is, um, continue to work on cost estimates with the district and with our Public Works Department. Uh, we need to develop, uh, more finer-tuned absorption projections, and what I mean by that is Roger's put together a very long and decades-long spreadsheet of how all of this property would be developed and what assessed value we might be able to anticipate looking 40, 50, 60 years into the future. Um, clearly, the longer you get out, the more of a guess that is, but we were trying to see, how long could we actually, um, put out the debt, and would there be assessed value to pay that debt off and, and so forth? So, we're gonna continue to look at that. Uh, this mill levy number as well, we were, we're using 30 as kind of a working number, because that's what the original GID started at. Um, and there will also need to be, uh, a contribution or a share for Tower Road that gets charged back to the existing GID, because there's clearly some benefit there to, to the existing GID. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna walk through this diagram as, as simply as I can. Um, good thing is, there's only one number on it, it just gets moved around here. Um, the first circle in the bottom left there is the existing GID, and the proposal here is that they would make a $2.25 million advance to the new GID. Uh, and that would be essentially their, the start of their contribution for Tower Road. It might not be the end, but it would be, is, the start of the contributions. Uh, then there would be an intergovernmental agreement between the new GID and the existing GID. The new GID, once it is formed, again, Chris Thompson would be the petitioner, he would be the only entity or property owner in the new GID. Uh, that GID would make a loan of also $2.25 million to his metro district. There would be a corresponding loan agreement and IGA between the new GID and his metro district, and the reason for that dollar amount is that that is the amount he needs to put in the water lines, uh, to not only, uh, get out of that mixing zone in Tower Road, so we can get clean water there, but then also the improvements that he needs to run into his property to make his convenience retail store, his hotel, and the airport parking lot suitable for development. These are costs that he has to, uh, bear no matter what. Um, the metro district then would make loan payments back to the, the new GID, as well as the mill levy would be applied to that assessed value, so there would be a revenue over and above, uh, that, those loan payments back to the new GID. Uh, you see at the bottom circle, that's the, the residential GID. Uh, we're not proposing to create that right now, but there'd be a similar structure where there would all be IGAs amongst each other, so they knew how they, uh, were paying for Tower Road, namely. Another thing that came out of the, the meeting was this idea of a, a landowner committee. Um, the idea was that if you were, uh, above a certain number of acres, or one of the original petitioners, you'd get a seat on this committee, uh, and it'd be used to review and prioritize the list of projects, look at the financial model, uh, continue to debate the pros and cons of the various alternatives, um, and then really determine that amount of debt authorization that we might put on the ballot this fall. Um, it would be an ongoing committee, I would make recommendations to the City Council on debt issuance and projects and things. Again, be non-binding, but be giving you, uh, a chance to hear from the landowners Again, be non-binding, but be giving you a chance to hear from the landowners that are directly affected by those decisions. So the timeline and the next steps, barring any objections tonight, we're going to accept the petition from the DIA Tech Center. We schedule that for two readings in front of you, March and April. Then there would be subsequent IGAs between the two districts. There would be the loan agreement and IGA that would need to be reviewed. We would like to wrap all that up on April 1st, if possible, because if we are going to go to a ballot language, a ballot this fall to set a mill levy and a debt authorization, we need to get that wrapped up about 90 days afterwards. And then there'd be an election this fall. We're not so sure we would actually issue bonds next year because we don't know if there's a demand, number one. Number two, there would be no assessed value, so you wouldn't be able to issue the bonds And with that, I'll open for questions. Thank you.
Jason.
Thank you. A question on the election itself and on the Tower Road component. So on the election, who are the electorate in that matter? Is it a citywide ballot measure? Or, I mean, obviously, you're talking about a geography that doesn't have a population yet.
For the initial ballot, that question November of this year would be the initial property. And so...
He would be the only voter.
He'd be the only voter.
Gotcha. So it's really a technicality to get that on the ballot. He's the only voter. I gotcha. In terms of the coordination between QCI and this effort, obviously, if this proceeds and evolves as outlined, that shifts to some degree the formula of projects that we would need to account for in QCI, if I'm reading this correctly, right?
Yes and no. We started with water and sewer, just like the existing GID did. And water and sewer, because that's handled by the South Adams District, they, was not addressed by QCI. The only real overlap that we identified was Tower Road. But to six-lane Tower Road from Peña to 120th is actually $160 million.
Gotcha.
So we looked at this as, what could we get done in a short period of time? I think we both agreed on the four lanes up to 104th was a reasonable number. But yeah, there's definitely an overlap there.
That makes sense. So beyond, to bring to six, to carry from 104th up and connect into Buckley, that would become more of an NIGID contribution potentially, or?
Could be, could be part of this, could be city-funded through QCI efforts.
However, that might.
Okay.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Now, I understand everything that you said, but I don't quite understand if there was all the collaboration and cooperation from the old GID partners that said that in their mind, this is a good endeavor, knowing that it's going to impact them somewhat down the road. Did you have complete, well, I see some people never showed up for the meeting, but with the ones that did, did you have good buy-in with it?
Frankly, no, we did not. We had a lot of discussions. They were good discussions. The meetings we had were several hours, a lot of debate back and forth about why do we need to create a new one? There was some education involved too, because some of the landowners didn't realize that they actually had to join one of them. They didn't realize that you needed to join one to get the water and sewer. Really, what we were identifying near the end of the process at the last meeting was willing participants, people who wanted to be petitioners and partner with us to get this going. The other landowners still have an option. They can join this later, they can join the existing one later. We're not forcing them to do anything right now as part of this proposal.
If I could add, the landowners who are in the existing general improvement district...
Right.
Ultimately, really don't even have a stake in the new one, and it would be to their benefit for the new one to be formed because it means less taxes imposed on the existing general improvement district. So, you know, once we got to a certain point in the discussion, it was kind of like, you know, not that they're irrelevant, but at the same time, they're not really relevant to this discussion because, you know, the existing general improvement district, in my opinion anyway, is politically maxed out. So it cannot, you know, we can't ask the voters there to issue more debt...
Right.
...and impose a higher mill levy for stuff that would be further east than where they are. So it didn't seem logical to spend more time talking to the landowners in the existing general improvement district, other than to reassure them that there needs to be coordination between the two. But really, we're looking at a lot more infrastructure, so, you know, a lot more taxes have to be paid in order to pay for that infrastructure. And it seemed to be the most relevant to focus on the property owners where that development needed to occur. Now, of course, as Jim mentioned, there is concern about competition because, you know, they want to be able to sell all of their project before something new is opened up. Unfortunately, though, it looks like development wants to come from the south and move north up Tower Road towards 104th. So you try to balance all of that out, and that's why we went with this structure instead of trying to focus on the existing general improvement district.
Now, something that Jim said about new landowners in the old GID need to join. Are there any new landowners in the old GID that haven't joined up with it yet?
Yes, I think so. There's properties that you see on this map that are shown in white. For example, there's a property right here that is Shea Properties. They have a choice. They can join the existing GID because they're right next to it, or they could join the new one. The other approach we were taking to try to address their concerns was we were focusing on the commercial properties only. So I think that allayed some of the fears of the residential developers that were in the room. Now, folks like Shea and Full &amp; White that have commercial and residential properties, they still had some concerns, but they do have options.
But they know that in order to get hooked up to water and sewer, whether it be in the old GID or the new, they've got to join one of the two GIDs because it isn't just going to come without a cost.
That's correct. And in fact, the existing GID is a good option for them right now, if they're next to the lines.
Because those lines are already there?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Jim?
Jim, I'm looking at the priorities. Number one, Piccadilly, 2A, 88th Avenue, 2B, E470 and 88 interchange. You really think that there's an interchange needed at E470 and 88?
Long-term, yes.
But I mean, it's number 2B in the priority list.
Yeah, this is the priority list we started with. I would say 1, 2A, and 2B are the ones that are needed to serve the Cali properties, at least their southern holdings. Item 3 benefits the whole area. But none of these are really needed to serve the DIATC property to start with.
And you've got a cost of 6.8 million. That's not the total cost of an interchange on E470. I don't think, well, where did you get that figure?
I believe that would be the cost of about four ramps out there. They've already graded in those ramps, what they did initially, so it cuts down some of the cost.
If you're talking about a full access interchange?
It's four ramps for a diamond interchange, just like the one that's got at 96th Avenue. Where the benefit being is that it's graded at the start.
I just thought 6.8 million would be awfully low, but to me, number three ought to be the number one priority, I think, Tower Road. And I was just wondering about that because we got an interchange at 96th, we got one at 104th, and you've got Peña Boulevard, and we can never get access for a right-hand turn off of Tower onto Peña. We've got a full access intersection there. But to build one at E470 and 88, that's one every mile. I don't know of any other place on E470 where you have an interchange every mile.
These are intended as initial planning estimates only and not necessarily a blueprint for how the money would be invested. One of the things that I think is very unique and a good feature of this new GID is this idea of having a committee of landowners that would help the GID Board of Directors, you, decide when to issue debt and what to invest that debt in. So this is some additional planning to get our arms around the total investment required in a logical way that that investment might start getting made in the area. The market's going to dictate quite a bit of it. The key is that we think it had started. I think when I went to work for the city just five years ago, I think at the time, the way the community was developing, the thought was development would start at north at 104th and Tower, 120th and Tower, and start to head south down that corridor. Now it seems more clear to us that development's going to start at the south and work its way north, which means we've got to get some key infrastructure in that southern area and then allow this GID to grow as the needs grow.
Well, is the 1, 2, 3, and 4, is that the chronological order in which you envisioned these being built at this point in time anyway?
Not necessarily, no.
And, you know, I better do it myself.
Because Piccadilly sure shouldn't be number one.
One second. I know that there's a lot of discussion going on where we're not getting good talk into the mic for anybody that may be at home, you know, and like from staff, if we need to hear from there, I think it's important that we come up here and use the mic. So I know we forget that there's viewers at home, and I noticed, Jim, in your comments, just get in front of the mic so that everybody can hear what's going on. Thanks.
Well, my question was, are these numbers 1, 2, 2A, 2B, 3, 4A, 4B, and 4C, is that the chronological order in which you envision building these improvements? And I guess the answer was no.
No.
It's going to be rearranged, however, okay. Well, good. Because I don't think Piccadilly should be the number one priority at all. That's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Anyone else on the council comments? Mr. Douglas?
Yeah, just to clarify, just so everyone understands how this is going forward for our citizens. So this, the new creation of the NIGID and the ECA GID, it's totally separate. It's not going to impact the residents right now going forward. It's still continuing the same way the north was felt. I mean, they're first, they're paying their way for the infrastructure, correct?
Go ahead, Brad.
If this proposal were to proceed, starting the ECA GID, fairly small, one property owner in the southeast part of the city, the only voter that goes on the ballot would be the owner of that property. The only way the current GID would be impacted would be this proposal requires that the current GID loan the new GID $2.25 million. Actually, we've not conceded a bit as a loan. Let me correct that. It would be the current GID providing its funding for the expansion of Tower Road in advance of expanding Tower Road so that 2.25 million can be used for the new GID to get public improvements going. So that 2.25 million would be out of circulation, I guess, for other northern general improvement district projects right now. But it's money the current GID would pay at some point for the widening of Tower Road. So the current GID Board of Directors, which is the city council, would have to approve making that payment to the new GID in advance of actually widening Tower Road.
And on that payback, what's that, is there, do you have a set amount, Roger, as far as when they pay back the loan, what kind of interest rate we're going to carry?
Well, let me clarify. It would not be a loan, it would be an advance payment?
Yeah, the advance comes from the existing GID to the new GID, and then the new GID does loan it to the Metro District, the DIA Tech Center Metro District. That loan would be at 6% interest.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anyone else? I guess I'll give my shot out of here. I'm not opposed to a new GID. I just want to make sure that we try to avoid some of the things that happened with the first GID. And I know in its inception, we had issues making the service debt payments until we got growth and development to take hold and start generating enough tax to cover the bonds that were issued. So Roger, a question to you is, how do we avoid those unforeseen shortfalls from the GID being able to pay the service debt if we put in a bunch of this infrastructure and we only have one user being the DIA Tech Center piece in the short term? In the long term, I know that the money will be there, but in the short term, how do we avoid not having to go back to the northern general improvement district to borrow more, whether it's borrow or say you're going to use it towards their share of Tower or whatever it is, when there's a shortfall on those bond payments? How do we balance that so we don't run into the same problems we had? Well, the totally arrogant answer would be, I wasn't here when that was set up originally. However, the correct answer is, you're absolutely right. You have to balance the assessed value with the debt service that needs to occur. And that's why we need some form, some way of seeding this new general improvement district. And that's why we're proposing the advance on the future investment that has to happen in Tower Road. That would seed the formation of the new GID and allow some of that assessed value to start being built up so that there is something there that you can support the debt with. What happened with the first general improvement district is that there was a projection of the amount of development that would occur, and it didn't happen as fast at the very beginning as what the projection was. And so that's why it ran into trouble. And I know shortly after I came, we had to refinance the debt in order to, you know, get away from basically being in structural default. And we were able to avoid that by refinancing the existing debt at that time. So that's where it's really important to balance the assessed value with the project that you're trying to fund. And that's why I'm trying to do that absorption study to figure out what does that balance look like. But again, that's merely a study. It's an exercise to show it's viable. What you really have to do is look at the assessed value that's on the street there, you know, already built, that's available to you, and will that support the debt for foreseeable future? And the reason I was asking this question is because I was here when the first one got started and I got to see where some of the shortfalls were in that first one. So with that being said, knowing that the GID, the current GID would loan 2.5 million, or not loan, but it would advance towards the improvements on Tower Road, and that money then from that GID would be loaned to the Tech Center project, which would then have to be paid back. If that's the seed money for that GID, I guess what I'm really trying to get at is, when can this council expect to see bond debt issued that would create the improvements that we're talking about? So what are we looking at from a timeline on improvements to Tower Road? If there's going to be an advancement on the Tower Road payment by the first GID, when can that GID expect those improvements? I think that's only fair to ask that question for those who are already residents and property owners for the original GID, when they can expect those improvements if they're going to put $2.5 million towards the advance of the Tower Road improvements.
The very earliest that any bonds could be issued would be 2015, but I doubt that we would be ready in 2015. It'd be more likely 2016 or 17. And the reason I say that is you have to have some track record...
And the reason I say that is you have to have some track record there of the assessed value, what's coming in in terms of the property tax revenue that's being generated. And number two, there would have to be design work done. So, you know, that takes time as well. So it's something that we would have to grow into. Now, if the Cali property is ready to go, that presents a whole nother conundrum because that takes a much larger amount of money. And so, you know, there's two parts to the answer. One is what's the assessed value that's available to support that? And the other is what are the projects that are needed? And so if it's just Tower Road and we can get by with some safety improvements at intersections, that's one thing. But if we have to widen the entire length, that's quite another thing. So I hate to give you a wishy-washy answer, but it really depends on, you know, the demand in terms of the market out there, and then also what's the assessed value that we have available to us.
Right. Because I, you know, and I'm saying the things I'm saying, I understand it. But I want the folks that are watching at home and the people in this room to understand it from a residential standpoint. Because if we create this, I don't want people to think, well, you know what? We did this, and now where's Tower Road? Because when you talk about the conundrum with the Cali property, some of their interests and what's going to be needed is going to be Himalayan Piccadilly before Tower Road for that project. So it's going to be dependent upon the people that are within that GID, what those needs are going to be and how those dollars need to be spent. And a lot of us sitting up here realize that the improvements to Tower Road are important to both GIDs. And so we see that, just like Mr. Benson said, as a priority. And not that that wouldn't happen over time through this GID creation, but I think it's important as a council, we think about what the QCI come across with because those are things that could help speed that up if both were done, the QCI and the new GID. But however, if the only thing that gets done is the new GID, there may be infrastructure that goes in place to benefit those property owners that are participating in that GID before improvements that would go in for Tower Road that would help both GIDs. And I don't want anybody to not get that because that's an important piece. So understanding the structure of the GID, that GID is going to be looking out for the interest of the property owners that are party to that GID. And I don't want the parties to the other GID to not understand that infrastructure will go in where it's necessary for the parties to the new GID. And I want to make sure that as a city, that we lean on you to make sure that we don't end up running short on those debt service payments because I know that was a huge issue for the council that I served on back then. And it was a good thing, we were in a good economy, and we had a lot of excess revenue because we had to cover those losses for several years. And I want to try to keep a balance there so that we don't, as a council, turn around and go, oh, well, we're at the end of the year and we need to come up with a bunch of debt service payments, and where are we going to get the money from? So I don't want it to be on the backs of the services of the residents. Otherwise, I'm supportive, but I will be keeping a close eye on it because I want to make sure it's done right this time. And I trust you guys. So, you know, no negative there. I just want to make sure that the residents realize that, you know, what we've been through at once, and I want to ensure that they get what they're paid for. The other thing is we have to be careful on the mill levies because we realize that we have to stay competitive in a development market, especially from a commercial standpoint. And the higher those mill rates are, the less competitive we become. And I'm sure that the property owners understand that as well, biting off a 30-mill rate to get this done.
Thank you for your trust. But you're absolutely right about the timing of the projects. And if the Cali property comes in with a major development, that's going to be a wonderful challenge to have, but it will be a challenge. You will have to figure out a solution to seed that work for the GID so that it can get that infrastructure in place that's necessary for it to develop.
René? And this is for Jim's benefit. If the Cali property were to come up first, 1 and 4C would be ahead of Tower Road. So I wouldn't want Jim to say, well, wait a minute, somebody told me Tower Road was a priority here. It's only the priority if other properties don't go to the first list, which right now, it doesn't seem like it's happening. But who knows what's going to happen in the future because all of a sudden, he might see a chance for development, and Piccadilly and Himalaya would have to be developed then.
Jason?
Roger stole my line. I mean, that's the problem we want, right? I mean, Cali, by putting this mechanism in place, it puts a whole toolbox at the disposal of these landowners to market and plan around their properties in a way that they haven't been able to to this point. You now have the ability to say, there is a structure in place that will enable us to build the infrastructure so that we can build this. So if Cali's got a massive Class A office or a light manufacturing facility or some airport-related use, now that can be made real, right? Today, it's all talk. This puts the mechanisms in place to actually make that possible. And by God, I would want Piccadilly, and I would want Himalaya to happen, to make that happen because that means we're bringing in jobs, we're bringing in sales and use tax. I mean, there's all sorts of good problems to have. I think the thing that Jim touched on earlier, Jim Hayes, that we need to remember is that there is this cord between this and QCI, right? We need to look at QCI. We have some intense discussions ahead of us at the retreat. In my mind, we need to make QCI happen and put an appropriate level of urgency behind those efforts because those are the things that are going to give us more of the potential near-term traction on seeing efforts that are going to show up as a benefit visually, right, to the existing GID, the existing community. This is, to me, the toolbox that makes development possible in that E-470 corridor that's not today. You know, if we put this in place and the only thing that gets funded out of it is DIATC, then, you know, we've got a problem, right? That's not, clearly, the market's not there yet. Somebody's not marketing their property well yet. You know, I guess to me, the key is going to be, if we put this in place, how are we working with our economic development team and these landowners to look at marketing that in a whole new way, right? This isn't about ICSC and getting a, you know, a restaurant. And this is about significant property, significant development that game-changing anchors. And I'll use the analogy really quickly of what I watched happen in the northern Virginia area near Dulles Airport. When my employer at the time, MCI, decided to move its headquarters from Pentagon City, it picked a piece of dirt that looked a heck of a lot like the Cali property or anything along the E-470 corridor in Loudoun County, Virginia. And at the time, there was nothing else there. I watched within an eight-year cycle, flying out there two or three weeks a month, that area transform in a period of eight or 10 years to an almost unrecognizable level of density. And the key to that whole thing was that that community, from what I observed, saw the need to put in the appropriate infrastructure. They put in streets, they put in the sewer, and they had these huge swaths of land that were ready and zoned for the right kind of development. You drive through there now, and you have campuses that make many of the office parks in the metro area pale in comparison. Verizon's headquarters has a half-mile hallway that accesses the spine of the building. So people for lunch will walk up and down the main hall. That's a big piece of dirt to put those kinds of campuses together. That's the potential that we have in that area, and you don't get there unless you put the infrastructure in place first. So, I mean, I don't want us to get wrapped around the axle on Tower Road's going to happen. This is certainly a vehicle, but this is an investment tool. This is the kind of, and I'll take comments from one of our applicants this evening, this is the kind of stuff that is, you know, I don't think he said a game-changing, but, you know, innovative or bold. We've got to pull the trigger on something like this in order to enable the development that we talk about all the time.
You know, I'm really glad you said that, Jason, because, you know what? Years ago, when we started the first GID, we didn't have any development north of 96th Avenue. And we knew that it was the only way that that area would develop. And you look at what's happened over time because of that foresight to put that GID into place and put those infrastructure needs in. It's still a burden because there's still that mill levy. However, you have to give up something to get something, and we know that that's going to develop. Now, if it ends up being just the Tech Center piece that develops, of course, you can issue more debt than you can service. So we know that that debt can be issued more and more as more pieces come online. But to service that debt, you know, you're reliant upon those properties' assessments. And that's why I was bringing up the Tower Road piece because by doing this, I don't want anybody to have a false sense that Tower Road's going to be here in two or three years. Because at the end of the day, depending on how many participants we have in that GID and what that assessed valuation is to be able to pay that debt down is going to determine when Tower Road gets built. So I would be very careful as we move forward with this that we don't try to put this, just because Tower Road's on the list doesn't mean it's going to happen in just a couple of years. It's going to happen when the assessments can service the debt on the bonds that would be required to pay for Tower Road. That's why it's important to look at this and QCI together because you're exactly right. That's how we get traction to make Tower Road happen faster if the QCI stuff happens. But if we're reliant upon this new GID, it'll happen when the assessments are there to service the debt. And I think I've said it twice now, so hopefully I'm clear. But I agree with you. It's the only way to really get some traction up north on that east side to get things to start coming from the south. Anyone else? Okay. Move on to the next one.
Mr. Mayor, our final presentation of the evening. We know it's getting late, it's been a long meeting already, but we have an important update to provide the council regarding staff's efforts to work through an annexation policy and ultimately, hopefully, an intergovernmental agreement with Adams County to help more effectively manage annexations into the community. This is an update that will include some further study by City Council, probably at a future study session. But we think it's timely to get you a good comprehensive update on how things are going. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Kramer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. A few minutes ago, Councilman McEl Downey talked about the presentations tonight, hopefully adding a good level of foundation for the retreat this weekend. Hopefully, this is another one of those. There is some relationships between what we'll be presenting tonight and the other issues that you've heard. Can you, hello? Is that better? Well, you really have to get close, don't you? As council remembers, we actually kicked this process off a few months ago and came back and provided an update to council regarding our progress with the annexation policy in conversations with the county. So just as a quick reminder, the way that staff has been working towards implementing an annexation policy is really through an intergovernmental agreement with Adams County. And we've begun those discussions. We've got to a point that's really bringing us here tonight in those discussions. This agreement that would possibly happen with the county would really be a pilot for Adams County with its other local jurisdictions, its other cities. And so this is really, in some ways, a pioneering effort in Adams County. When we began these conversations, it took a while to agree on the items or the elements of this annexation policy that we should be talking about. This is actually the first presentation that we made to City Council covering these six items. So on these two slides, there are six items. Covering these six items is what we presented to determine, did council fully support this. I'll just quickly go through these because they're pretty relevant. I'm going to try and keep this presentation. I understand the time, and it's late, and everyone's probably mentally been through the wringer. So I'll try to keep this moving along and at a pretty high level. But going through these, at number one, establishing standards for applicable and relevant development patterns. If it develops in the city, if it develops in unincorporated areas, how does that look? Are we going to adopt the county's standards? Is the county going to adopt some of our standards, maybe landscaping, roadway design, et cetera? Number two, standards for establishing common and consistent comprehensive plan designations. So again, regardless of where it develops, is there going to be some consistency between those comprehensive plans? Number three, guidelines for establishing and considering annexation of lands within the GSA, the areas that have been a part of the South Adams County Water and Sanitation District, their general service area. They've been members and paying taxes. How are we going to handle those situations? Number four is a similar issue, but instead in the GID, in the northern range, which we just heard about. That's obviously a little bit different context or situation than the GSA simply because to get their water for new development, they have to hook into lines that have been financed through the GID itself. That's a different financing structure than occurs in the GSA. Number five is parameters for revenue sharing for non-residential developments, both ways. And then number six is basic mechanisms for negotiating and adopting new regulations. So to sort of get to the heart of the issue, there's a lot of, some of this tonight, we are not going to concern ourselves with for a couple of reasons. The first is some of these, we've made progress with their staff on negotiating these points, and we have agreement on a couple of these areas. One of them is number two on the list, so 1 through 6. Number two, we had agreement, standards for establishing common and consistent comprehensive plan designations and shared land uses. Through the course of our negotiations, the county adopted their new comprehensive plan. And I'm happy to report their future land use map coincides extremely well with the one that we passed a couple of years back. So we already have success on this area. So regardless of what happens with these negotiations, even if they break down horribly, we are going to have that consistent land use pattern. So that's a good thing. Another area where we have agreement is the parameters for revenue sharing. So when I say agreement on this item, it's, they really are interested in talking about possible revenue sharing in the E-470 corridor, should we use urban renewal. And, you know, we're required to have some of those conversations through an urban renewal process anyway. So what we have said is we can't commit to anything. We can't know whether or not there'll be any revenue sharing available, but we will commit to having those conversations at that time. From the city's perspective, that's certainly more than reasonable considering that we'd be required to do that. They seem to think that that would satisfy their needs at this time. So we've had an area of agreement on that, which is that we haven't shut the door on it, and we'll have those conversations at a later point. Number six is another thing we don't need to talk about because those are basic mechanisms for negotiating and adopting new regulations. We haven't got there yet. That'll probably need to be determined once we decide what we want to do with all the rest of these. I'm going to quickly go through a little bit of background because it's going to help inform our conversation in just a moment. Just a little bit of background about annexation. I know most of council's probably aware of this already. I'm going to summarize these, I'm not going to go through all these bullet by bullet. But in short, the state authorizes cities to annex. We then set up the authorization for that ourselves, their own municipal code. That power is discretionary, which sounds obvious, but there are some processes out there that aren't necessarily discretionary. Subdivisions, for example. If an applicant meets all the relevant criteria, it's really hard for cities legally to say no to that subdivision process. This is not that. This is very different. The city has much more discretion about determining if a proposed development, proposed annexation, is going to contribute to the overall well-being of the community. Is it going to contribute to the long-range vision that the community has already established? Much, much more discretion about annexation. To be eligible to be annexed, you have to meet certain criteria. Of these four criteria, the biggest one you should pay attention to is probably the first one. It's the only one with math involved. Basically requires that for a property to be annexed, to be eligible to be annexed, 1/6 of its perimeter boundary line must be contiguous to already incorporated areas. So that means that there's the result, and you'll see on a map here in just a moment, there's large portions of areas that are in unincorporated Adams County that are within our growth boundary, but we can't annex them even if we wanted to because we don't have that 1/6 contiguity. Now, within that annexation realm, there's still another level. So for those properties that are eligible to be annexed, cities also have another tool in their toolbox to annex those properties. And they can use an enclave annexation technique. And it's a similar, council will probably remember this from a fuse back with the industrial enclave. So if properties are surrounded for more than three years, they have an opportunity to unilaterally annex properties. Regardless of whether the property owner signs the application, there's an opportunity for the city to unilaterally annex those. That matters as we... That matters as we start talking about some of the things that the county is really asking for. So, real quick, this is the, this is just attempting to show, yeah, it shows up well. This is just attempting to show a baseline of within the growth, within the growth area, the growth boundary, which is the green line. The areas that are basically this lighter shade have already been incorporated. The areas that are in blue have yet to be annexed. So that gives you an idea about what, what we're tackling here, what we're talking about. Within the blue areas, there's some different criteria and I'm going to lay these out. A majority of the questions that will come up as a result of this, these typologies that I'm going to lay out, will probably need to have some subsequent conversations. Especially as it relates to negotiation, it may need to be in an executive session. We're going to get to some basic questions here tonight, though, at a pretty high level. So, there's two main ways that we divide up this conversation with the county. The first is our ability to annex based on the state statutes, and I covered that just a little bit ago. The second way that this gets broken down and makes things more complicated is the, is the utility source for these areas. Are they getting their water and wastewater from which system? So when you look at this, I'm going to show you a map and it's going to be color-coded. So this will hopefully tell you what the colors mean. If it's green, we, they're el, these properties that are green on the map are eligible to be annexed and the city has the opportunity to do an enclave annexation. If they're yellow, it means they're eligible to be annexed, but the city can't unilaterally annex them. They, they have to have a willing property owner who's wanting to annex. And then finally, the areas that are in red are, we, we can't even annex them, even if we wanted to and the property owner wanted to, it's irrelevant. We don't have that a contiguity yet. So when we look at a map, you can see, you can see for the most part, along the, we have the, a lot of green areas in the Monaco and Irondale neighborhood, some pockets of, of, of green areas in the Northern Range, quite a bit. When we were in this, I think we were a little surprised at how much yellow and red is along the I-76 corridor, especially the red. It's probably difficult to tell this in the DuPont area, but that's all red as well. I mean, he's not even eligible to be annexed. So that's, believe it or not, that's just one half of the equation. The other half is the utilities. And, and I laid out this a little bit already. We have the GSA, the GID, the new GID, which you just heard about a few minutes ago, and then a GID that our grandchildren will worry about north of the airport. So when you look at that on a map, oh, that's great, that works, you can see the four areas. So we have the GSA with the existing utility infrastructure in place from South Adams County, the Northern Infrastructure GID, the ECA GID, right? And then obviously, future GID north of the airport. So when you put these two issues together, it gives us seven different policy questions that we'll need to eventually ask you, which takes a long, we would be here a while longer if we went through all seven of them, because each one of them, on their own, is a really meaty topic. So, there is a, there are, for us to keep moving forward with the county, there are a couple of key issues that we would like to get some input from council on tonight in preparation for these later conversations. So this slide sort of in some way summarizes, we, we are at a little bit of a crossroads in our conversations with county staff. It is our impression that they want to go, they have some thoughts on one side of this conversation and if, they're, they're stating that they're, they're serious and that they, they really need these, these elements to be within any IGA for them to move forward. We're coming to you because we think that there might be other ways to look at this situation. We want to get input from you to know that, that you agree with our sentiment on that point. The county right now, I guess last week, last week went to, the, the staff went to the county commissioners. As you know, there's two new county commissioners. I think they were doing a check-in as well to see if they were going down the right path from their perspective, get that confirmation from their board. That's really what we're here doing tonight as well. So, lot, loads and loads and loads of issues. Lots of, we, there's permutations for all these different land use types and utility providers, not providers, but utility systems. The big thing we'd like to get from you tonight is really on this slide. At a very high level, the county is basically hoping that within the, the GSA, for lack of better terms, they're hoping that the city will pursue possibly enclave annexation within a set timeframe, really for the express purpose of eventually ending their maintenance And that's really for the GSA. On the flip side of that, they're hoping that for areas that are in the GID, specifically the Northern Range, that if that can't annex or if property owners aren't wanting to annex, that it could possibly still develop in the county, but with maybe the shared design standards kind of approach. Staff is recommending to you that we actually, we have issues with both of those. Staff is hoping to take forward that if it's in the GSA, if it's in the core city, that we really don't forcibly annex or, or do an enclave annexation. We really would like to propose with the county that we only annex when an area wants to annex, be it a majority, supermajority, or whatever. Conversely, in the Northern Range, where we have GID infrastructure in place, that our GID members have been paying into, we're proposing that if, for basically what amounts to, if it's an agricultural development and they, they want to develop, they want to substantially develop something, that they would be required to annex. And what this means is, that puts the county in an interesting position. Theoretically, somebody who wants to develop in the Northern Range, they wouldn't necessarily be able to play both sides against each other. They would have to come talk to us and they couldn't talk about alternative annexation techniques in the county, maybe by using well and septic, for example. So that would protect us, protect our GID investment, while also at the same time ensuring that our design standards, our long-range vision is then protected in the Northern Range. So, again, as you probably saw in the packet, there are loads and loads of questions after this. I'm going to stop right here, if that's okay. Look to Jim and Jenny and Steve back there, see if there's anything else that I missed or that we should clarify, and then open up to council to see, for feedback.
We'll start with JD.
I just have a question. When it says non-agriculture, agriculture looks very different in some places than what we typically think when we think agriculture. Is that pretty broad-based or is that?
I would actually even say, there's probably some non-agriculture properties that if they were to develop, substantially develop or redevelop, right? If somebody wants to re-roof their house or re-roof or add a tough shed on their farm, we're not going to force them to annex at that point. That's not what we're talking about. We're not going to say someone needs to make a major investment to redevelop their property. We're proposing, because they're going to be using GID facilities, what staff's proposing is that the IGA would require them to annex to do that redevelopment.
I'm confused, totally confused. We don't require people to annex now that are in the GID area. I, I've been getting a mixed message in the past, and I guess I'm, I should say, that there's some people that want water and sewer and they're being told they have to annex to the city. And so I'm trying to understand, is that true or not true, that are in the county now?
That's a good question. Certainly at a staff level, we have encouraged our developments to annex and those that are in the, the GID area. A big part of that, I believe, of your previous recollections are probably stemming from the IGA with the Water District that says that should properties need to get that service, they should talk to the city about annexing. There have been times, though, through the execution of that IGA, that maybe we haven't been eligible to annex and it puts the Water District in a difficult position, because then they are basically telling somebody that they can't give them services. And it really gets tricky when they're in the GSA and they've been paying taxes all along. So there have been exceptions to that that, that might create some of that perception that you're referring to, that might be perceived as inconsistent. Again, that would be a big benefit from, from staff's perspective of getting an IGA where like this worked out, because then it's really an agreement between the city and the county that, that in some ways puts the development, urban level development where it should be, which is within city boundaries.
But where does the water and sewer come in? There seems to be, this is a three-legged stool. It seems to be the South Adams County, because they're basically part of the GID with water and sewer. Then it's the county, then it's us. And it has been in the past, all three of them have been bumping heads where somebody wants to and somebody's saying, you can't or you have to or, I, I'm, I understood this whole presentation till we got to this page right here, and then I completely got lost because it doesn't make sense with a lot of things that have happened in the past. So maybe I need to get a better understanding on...
Chris, if I, I, I think I could probably help out a little bit.
Okay, please help me.
The original IGA with the Water District was to ensure that major developments would annex to the city, to be provided the services that the city can provide, that the county doesn't have the capability to provide. However, based on how that IGA was written, it got taken to the point of some property owners that, I'll, I'll just use, for example, the 120th and Chambers. We have three commercial corners. There's one commercial corner that is in Brighton. That commercial corner cannot get water and sewer without being served by South Adams. We cannot annex that because it's within Brighton's growth boundaries. Brighton would like to develop that property and they need service. So we have a Water District that's tied in and we've done this, this agreement. I, and I was party to that agreement and don't believe that was the original intent, was to manipulate individual small properties that are in different scenarios. It was for the large development of a Shea property or a Cali property, that kind of thing, to ensure that that property would be within the city's boundary. When you talk about a small property like at 120th and Chambers, in Brighton's development area, and we have the other three corners, I look at it as the Water District is in the business of providing services. And we shouldn't manipulate the ability for those to, them to provide services based on annexation. That's exactly why I think this is a necessary tool, so that we have an annexation policy that's tied in with the county rather than requirement of services. You couldn't say, okay, you're going to have to have Comcast cable, to, to have Comcast cable, you're going to have to annex to the city. And so there's an issue with using, using services on those individual pieces. However, we have a revenue sharing document with Brighton along the 120th. Why would we not want South Adams to serve them and for them to develop, because we get 50% of the revenue and it encourages development on the other three corners of 120th and Chambers? So the frustration is, those are individual scenarios that I think are going to have to be taken up separate from this. I think what you're looking at here is the bigger picture, Renee. And hopefully that's helped clarify some of it. There are individual properties that are going to always have to have an individual look because of their proximity, where they're located, whether they were grandfathered and already had service prior to annexation, those kind of things. But in the big picture is for moving forward with the community to ensure that we're on the same page with the county for future annexation of these properties. Where I have concerns would be forced annexing the Monaco-Dupont neighborhoods with them not wanting to annex. Not only that, based on the maintenance for that area, is there enough revenue by annexing them to service that area and what's the cost to the city to do that? And I've always said, I don't think we should force those people to be a part of our community. We should encourage them to be a part based on the services we can provide them and show them what a better deal they're going to be, get for being in, within the city. And I got to sit on the sidelines and watch the forced annexation of a certain area and we all know that there was some issues that were, that were derived from that, especially with the downturn in the economy. So ultimately, I would have to tell you, Chris, just on my own personal end of it, I'm concerned about this, the, the discussions to the county about having to annex those enclaves in the general service area. And when it comes to the Northern GID, I think that those properties, we should have something work out where we want those properties to annex that are, that are within the GID. However, there are individual properties that have already gotten service and other things that I think are going to be touchy. But to me, it's those bigger developments that I think that the city is more interested in, in ensuring that they're annexed. And that's my two cents.
I would just add to that by saying that assuming we can work through these issues and arrive at an annexation agreement with the county, which seems to be where it belongs, we've been using the agreement with the Water District over the last several years to, to control when property is required to annex into the city. And it seems like that ought to be an agreement between us and the county. So assuming we're able to work through these issues, end up with an agreement with the county, it likely will require amendments to our agreement with the Water District. I'm not sure it's necessarily a, a three-way agreement. It might just require separate amendments to the, to our agreement with the Water District.
And you know, to all due respect to the Water District, they're a service provider. And I don't think it's fair for the city to hold them back from providing a service, which is where they generate their revenue from. And that's exactly what it seems like we've been doing. So I am much more supportive of working out an agreement with the county than to force who a service provider can serve and not serve. JD?
I don't think I was confused till Renee started talking and now I'm extremely confused because it is a memory of providing service to someone who was in unincorporated, but Brighton's growth plan, correct? And we're now doing water up there.
We're not doing water up there and that's what you have to remember.
The Water District is doing.
That's right, but we're not the Water District.
But it was in the, the GID that they had to join the GID. I guess where I'm getting confused is, where does this all work?
They still have to join the GID.
When we're talking surrounding cities, first of all, I don't believe in annexing any forced annexation. There's got to be some, something really unique before I would support a forced annexation. I won't say never, but I, it's not a policy I would like. But when we're dealing with this Adams County thing, I think that you definitely have to include the surrounding cities, what, what's in their growth plan and what are we talking about here? Are we incorporating everybody's growth plans? Are we protecting everybody's growth plans? Because I certainly wouldn't want anybody approaching on ours because they went and worked with Adams County to make some kind of a deal. I didn't know what was going on.
JD, maybe this will help clear it up a little bit. When you have like 120th, you have Brighton on one side, just pretend there's a line. Brighton's on one side, Commerce City's on the other side. If there's a property that Brighton needs to have South Adams service because they don't have service in the area, if they're tied to a GID line, they would have to join the GID. And from my understanding after talking with Jim, they can join the GID without having to annex. That ensures that the taxes from those water lines that were installed with the GID dollars are, are paid back to the GID, so that that gets paid off. And I think that's an important piece of it. Now, if they're, if they're in Brighton's growth boundary and Brighton is the only one that can annex them, and they're going to end up being dead property. So you'd have 120th Avenue and if we, if we said, you can't have water and sewer unless you annex, then all those properties that would be on that one side of the line would never develop. And I think it's in our best interest to encourage our partners on our borders to develop, especially since we're getting a shared revenue off of that, so that it encourages development on our side of the street as well. And I think we have to at some times not look at a them and us scenario when it comes down to a boundary, so that we can create a community that is not a, a line of development on one side or the other. So that it's, it's services to all the residents in that area. And you know what? I would like nothing more than to encourage development along our border for Brighton to develop, so that our residents could, could have multiple... to develop so that our residents could have multiple services because we're going to get 50% of that revenue. So hopefully that helps with joining the GID and annexation. They're two different things and you can join the GID and pay those taxes back without having to annex. And it's a service issue and we've found the district to only serve what's in Commerce City. And I don't think that's fair to the district. I think they should have the right to serve the people that need service because that's how they generate their revenue.
Yes and no. I mean, because the first priority is they have to be able to continue to provide us service. So that's where you get stuck there, right? Is that if we let you get too big, if you go and you reach too far out, then at some point is it, you can't service us anymore because...
Well, and Brighton wouldn't want us serving half their city. However, what you have to also note is to cover some of those costs, the district requires double, double the cost for outside service. So you're going to get double, double the water rates if you're on that other side of 120.
Well, and this is going in places I didn't even want it to go. I just want to make sure that everybody involved here, we're working together.
If I could answer a part of your question, the growth maps that Chris showed up on the screen are based on existing agreements we have with the city of Brighton to agree on what our future growth boundary is and what their growth is. So the maps we're showing don't change any of that. So don't want you to think that we're proposing to grow into Brighton's future growth. We've agreed on those boundaries and the maps that Chris showed respect that agreement.
Well, because the county's been redoing their comprehensive plan, correct? So is this, everybody's now got their identified and all cities are, okay?
The growth boundary, if you hear us referring to the IGA growth boundary, it's really a composite of a series of IGAs that we've signed with a whole bunch of communities, Aurora, Brighton, Thornton. And you add all those together and you can piece together what our overall IGA growth boundary is. So just a quick follow-up clarification question on some of the input that I think we're receiving tonight. For the GSA areas, I think I've heard that council is not really supportive of an enclave annexation in that area. Maybe if the area wanted to be annexed, there'd be some support for that. I will tell you, this issue is sort of at the top of the list for the county as they're telling it to us. So this, if we, for their staff. So if we don't really move forward on this, we may bring the conversations to a halt. Is there any appetite for at least putting it on the ballot or, you know, on some sort of putting it to a vote of people within a district within five years? Or does council prefer to just let possible GSA enclaves approach the city?
I think with regard to the annexation, pseudo-forced annexation, if you will, I mean, nobody wants to go back through what we went through with the industrial areas. But I get the, I get the county's desire, right? I mean, they're dealing with Swiss cheese, right? We've used the term before. They've got little bits of property that they have a requirement to support. Certainly they want to get out of that. I think the key is, to your point, how do you get those folks to say yes? Well, it goes back to our QCI discussion. It's about communication. So if this is the county's desire, the county's got to help pitch this. If the, if that pitch is made and people are willing to follow, great, it's a done deal. I mean, to me, that's, that's the simple fact of it, right? This isn't a matter of the county puts this policy forward, we sort of concede to it, now we've got to go try and sell this. This has got to be a matter of the county and the city working together to say, "This is in your best interest, this is why, these are the puts and takes," and then it gets put to a vote and we move ahead. I don't know that we complicate it any more than that, right? I mean, in terms of this versus the Water District IGA, I mean, I think, I think we netted out on the right spot there. I mean, the key is we shouldn't be using that IGA. This is a more appropriate agreement. Chris said at some point in his comments about the investment, right, that the GID has made in terms of the northern range. We just talked about the costs of building a whole new GID in the E-470 corridor. The last thing that I have any interest in doing as a member of the GID is having somebody come in that's going to have, be a substantial user in the GID and they get a free ride on our back, right? That's not cool. That's not okay. That's like, you know, who wouldn't want that deal, right? The point is, you've got a substantial use, you're going to have a substantial impact, you're going to be impacting the roads that have been paid for by the GID and using that infrastructure. By God, you're going to join the GID and you're going to pay your fair way, your fair share. I mean, those, to me, it's that simple in those two respects.
So, so for the core city, and I've got a map up here that zooms in a little bit on the GSA area, I will say, I think, and I'm guessing here a little bit, but I think the difference between us continuing these conversations and maybe them grinding to a halt, if we had the opportunity to say that we would at least ask some of these green areas, and not these, but these, if they would be interested in annexing. Not that we would commit to any enclave annexation, but if we'd at least ask in the next five, six, seven years, that might be enough to keep the conversations with the county going.
I think it's got to be a matter of, we would be open to having those discussions if it were done in partnership with the county.
Sure, okay.
Right? I mean, I think that's the key is, we shouldn't be leading that charge in any way, shape or form, particularly if this is a key point that they've put forward, then they need to help lead that discussion. That's my...
I see lots of head nodding on that. Does that sound about right?
Yeah, that's, that's what makes total sense. Because if they aren't going to be a partner to it, then we are back where we started. We're the only ones doing it.
And so then to follow up with all this momentum, for the second major area, which is the GID, I'm also hearing a lot of support for, in essence, making sure that through the IGA with the county, that we require any major development to annex.
In the GID.
In the GID. Now, just, that, that's going to, you know, there will be property owners who will find that disappointing, to say the least. So I just want everybody to understand what that means. We will, as we continue through these negotiations, the devil's in the details sometimes, defining what a major development is will end up being critical. You know, what level, like I said earlier, re-roofing your farmhouse, obviously, we have no interest in recommending to you that we would require annexation for that. You know, building a shed, that's probably not worthy of being annexed. You know, opening up a dry cleaner, opening up a strip mall. At what point does it become a major development that is worthy of being annexed? That'll be something, I don't know if we'll even be able to answer that tonight, but it's, that'll be probably one of the key dividing lines along this conversation.
And it's going to depend on the impact that they put. People know that when they impact to a certain degree, they, they become a force. And that's when we will actually, well, as the staff, I guess we'll leave it up to you to bring it back to us and say, is this what you would consider a major development?
Well, there's a whole series of other questions that we didn't get to tonight. I think what might be appropriate is as we continue these conversations with the county, probably in an executive session, because it'll be under the purposes of negotiation contract, we might get into our negotiating positions on some of these things. And that might be one where we give you just like four examples, you know, this one, A, do you think that's a major development? B, do you think that's a major development? And kind of go down the line so that we really can zero in on where is that line? So we'll probably incorporate that into a follow-up study, executive session with you. I feel like we've had enough feedback to keep moving forward.
Any other questions from the council? Steve?
Yeah, I had a question here. Well, the way this sits right now, I know Adams County, they went ahead and implemented a storm, a storm drain, a storm drain fee. And, storm water drain fee, sorry. And the way this sits right now had, I'm thinking if the flea market would have annexed into the Commerce City and then they were subject to that storm drain fee. But they've come to us, since we don't have one, to get out of paying that fee because if you look at all the blues down here, in order to balance things out as far as curb and gutter and all that with, with the new infrastructure, if, you know, as far as updating our, our storm drain system, you seem like you have to annex some of these areas in the blue here to make, to make things flow right. I mean, you know, of course, work with the county, but, you know, they can't make improvements of their infrastructure without the joint, with what we have going on as well. So that's going to be a challenge.
In those areas, the element of this that in some ways makes that a bigger challenge is that some of those drainage areas, we actually can't annex right now even if we wanted to. So all the areas in red aren't eligible, even if the property owner wanted to annex. So, yeah, that, that presents an ongoing challenge. I think what I'm hearing you say though is, in general, it always helps to annex when you can, just because you provide that continuity of service, whether it's drainage or lease or whatever. Is that correct?
Yeah, correct.
And a perfect example of when there is a significant development would be 88th Avenue and McKay, right there where the two hotels and the convenient gas is, there's another hotel site and they currently have water and sewer service without being required to annex. And that guy could develop right now. And those are the property owners that are going to probably have an issue with, okay, now you have to annex because it's a major development and you're within our growth boundary. And I understand what you're saying there, I'm just trying to help make it a little clearer for some of the council members. I think you've done a great job of getting us a good start. I expected there to be some concerns on both sides. When it comes to the Dupont-Monaco area that is in those enclaves, I think it's an education piece, just like we talked about the QCI, because honestly, that's an impact to the city financially to take that on. And it's a benefit to the residents based on the services that are provided. I think the biggest issue is, a lot of those folks don't want to deal with the type of code enforcement that we require versus the counties. And so they don't want that, that big brother government clean-up-your-yard scenario. And I think that's probably the biggest challenge is how do we get the county to, you know, support how we enforce things within our jurisdiction and vice versa, because it's a no-brainer, if you live over there, to join the city. You're going to get a lot more in just trash, trash removal than what you're going to pay. So it comes down to how you're serviced and I don't want the pressures of the city's rules and regulations. So it's going to be a big educational piece and I don't think we should annex people that don't want to be annexed. So the biggest, the biggest part of that is, is to, is to help to educate them that it is better to be a part of the city. And if you can't get, you know, the majority of them to want to do that, then I'm opposed to forcing them. So that's a much bigger dialogue that has to happen another day, but we've been down this for 12 years since I've been involved and I know that it's, it's a, be careful, kick gloves when you're working with, talking annexation and Dupont-Monaco in the same sentence. Thanks, Chris.
I will add, I think that there's an opportunity to keep these conversations going just because I think the county doesn't sometimes understand all the criteria. They've asked us to do an enclave annexation for the areas that are in red. So I think we have an opportunity to work with them, to help them understand a little bit further about how this works as well. So hopefully that keeps the conversation going. I expect we'll work with city manager's office to schedule a date to come back to you at the executive session. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. City Manager, do you have anything to add?
Just wanted to briefly summarize the city manager's report for this evening. It's very brief. We have the normal schedule of events on, on page two in terms of updates. We're pointing out that we've attached the QCI's recommendations, including their presentation and their written report, they're attached to the city manager's report. Also included a quick update on legislative affairs for the year so far, including a link to get some additional information for those interested. And then also want to let council know, of course, we have the winter retreat coming up Friday and Saturday. We will be sending an electronic packet out to council members, but rest assured, it doesn't have a lot of new information in it. It's mostly information you've been presented already. Just giving you additional fresh copies of it so you can get quick access to it at the retreat on Friday and Saturday. Included will be an agenda. The items that we'll be planning to include along with the agenda, we're going to go ahead and attach the QCI recommendations again. We're going to give you a copy of this year's capital improvements plan that was included in the 2013 budget. The two new items that you'll be seeing for the first time are based on the 2013 budget, based on feedback from council, based on direction we've been provided, starting last year, from the retreat last year, we've put together a work plan for 2013 covering both capital projects and operations. So we'll have that for you and then I'll review that with you Friday evening. So look for that. The plan is to send the packet out to you Thursday afternoon. We would like council members to be at the MSC, the Municipal Services Center on Rosemary at 5:30 for dinner Friday. And then we'll do a short presentation on the state of the administration with staff people coming and going on Friday. And then the rest of Friday is talking about what we want to accomplish on Saturday. So if you could be there at 5:30, that would be great.
Bob?
Just to inform council, it doesn't appear that there'll be a need for an executive session next Monday evening, February 4th. We'll send out an email explaining why we don't need an exec session and then we'll follow through with the regular meetings starting at 6:30.
Hey, thanks, Bob. And a quick update to the council. Me and Renee both attended the, and Steve, I think, was there as well, attended the economic forecast that was put on by the Chamber downtown. And it was, the speakers were Mayor Hancock and Mayor Hogan. And the outlook is very promising based on that economic forecast. The other thing I wanted to let the council know is, we've been continuing to have the airport coordinating committee meetings, myself and Rick Teeter as members, and Jim has been attending as the alternate. And I want to let you know that that airport coordinating committee went ahead and started the consultation committee, which is a piece within the IGA that allows one, one extra step to have a smaller committee formed out of the DIA coordinating committee called the consultation committee. What that is, is three members from Adams County, three members from Denver to sit down and talk about the airport issues at hand and try to iron out some of the concerns that are taking place. Myself, Steve Hogan, and Commissioner Chaz Tedesco are the three members that will be at the table for the consultation committee when we go to meet with Denver. We don't know who the members of Denver are going to be yet, but we are preparing, the three of us, what we're taking back to Denver to talk about. And I'll keep you all apprised of how that's going, but we are really down to the last step that the IGA allows for discussions with Denver to try to work out the concerns with the 1988 IGA. I think those are the highlights and I will look forward to getting back onto our regular schedule for Monday nights rather than all the holidays we've had and stuff. We'll get back into full swing and I'll see everybody Friday afternoon. There's nothing further? The meeting tomorrow with, oh, with the city of Brighton. Yeah, right, you guys have that on your calendar. So that'll be tomorrow night. And then Friday, we'll start our, start our retreat. So look forward to seeing you then. Have a good night.